Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the order of the Folsom City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 11th, and the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Morin.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening, and you'll notice that at least one of us up here is wearing the green shirt, and a whole bunch of green shirts out there. We'll explain that later. It's not St. Patrick's Day, but actually, I think it's better. So the clerk, call the next item.
Your next item this evening is Agenda Update. You have one updated item tonight, that is Item 8A. There's an updated resolution. It has been provided to the council and is available to the public at the back table.
Okay. I'm glad we have a nice full house, because it's appropriate for the thing I'm going to do. We have a resolution of commendation for our retiring Park and Recreation Director, Mr. Robert Goss. So, Robert, if you'd like to join the city council members at the podium, we'd appreciate it. I like his comment. Boy, would've wished he waited till the end. Robert is the one that's not known for limelight. So anyways, thank you so much, Robert, for all your years of service, and before I read this resolution, I'd like to personally say thank you for the hard work and what you've dedicated to the community. I especially want to thank you for your friendship. What I admire about you the most is when we disagreed, you were not afraid to tell me that you disagreed with me and vice versa, and we were able to find resolutions more times than not. And after we walked out of building, we're still just as good a friends we were the day before, and we knew it would be tomorrow. So, thank you for that.
That's because when we didn't find resolution, we did it your way.
That's why my name was on the ballot. Now you know why we're friends. We can banter like that all day long. So I'd like to read this. "It's a resolution commendation honoring Robert Goss for his outstanding service to the Folsom community. Whereas Robert Goss began his career with the City of Folsom on contract as a park project manager in 1993, then served full-time as a landscape architect, senior park planner, park planning superintendent for Parks and Recreation, and then as capital development manager in the Public Works Department. Whereas Robert has a significant role in the design, construction, and project management of numerous parks and facilities, including the Zoo Sanctuary Bear Cougar Exhibits, Ernie Sheldon Youth Sports Complex, Bud and Artie Davies Park, the Folsom Aquatic Center, John Kemp Community Park, Livermore Community Park, Evy Perazzo Briggs Park, Hazel McFarland Park, and multiple, multiple mini-parks. Whereas, as a capital development manager, Robert was the project manager of the state-of-the-art Folsom Public Library Georgia Murray Building, Historic District Parking Garage Railroad Block, and Fire Station Number 35." That's our main station. Whereas in October 2004, Robert was recognized for his exceptional abilities, dedication, and commitment to Folsom, as he was appointed the Park and Recreation Director. Whereas as Parks and Recreation Director, Robert led a vibrant department and was instrumental in building multiple parks and facilities, including the Johnny Cash Trail, Lake Natoma Waterfront Trail, East Bibble Bike Pedestrian Overcrossing, Nissenon Community Park, the acquisition of the Folsom Sports Complex, renovation of 48 Natoma, which is our senior art center next door, Historic District Plaza Amphitheater, the Zoo Barn, and Economy Family Park. Whereas out of Robert's abundant creativity and vision, very creative, events were born such as Cyclabration, a multi-day cycling event, The Wild Way, a fun obstacle course challenge, and Wild Nights and Holiday Lights entering its wildly successful ninth year at the zoo. Whereas after the 2011 Amgen Tour of California, Stage 3 passed through, as an avid cyclist, Robert secured the Amgen Tour of California for the 2014 Stage 2 time trials, the 2016 Stage 6 time trials, and the 2018 Stage 6 start. Whereas Robert worked tirelessly with the Cash family estate to secure use of Johnny Cash name for the Johnny Cash Trail, and has been earnestly involved with the creation of the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience that will someday enhance the Johnny Cash Trail with art and music experiences celebrating the life and legacy of Johnny Cash." It's a two-pager. And whereas throughout Robert's 25-year career with the city, under six city managers, he has continuously demonstrated his passion for parks and recreation and building community along with significantly contributing to the city's distinctive-by-nature attributes. And whereas Robert is regarded as a highly respected leader, mentor, and friend. Now therefore, I, Stephen Miklos, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the citizens of this great community, have the genuine honor to congratulate Robert Goss on his retirement for the City of Folsom, convey our warmest wishes to him and his wife Claudia, and family, pass and adopt this 11th day of September 2018. So, Robert, congratulations.
Now it's my turn to get even, you know? Twenty years as a park commissioner, now it's my turn to get even, right? Well, we had some real experiences that 20 years, and we came to a position that I had to tell Robert on more than one occasion, I did not work for the city manager, I worked for the city council. And he reminded me, he didn't work, he worked for the city manager. But we ended up agreeing. If we disagreed, he'd send up his report, and I'd send up my report, we'd take a chance who won. But that didn't happen often, but we did. When I met Robert, he was a contract architect, park guy for a private company, and they were doing a project out by the high school. And we talked and all that, and then that talk came into making a contract, I think it was maybe the first contract that the company did with Roger. Robert was the main guy. And it's an experience that I think he learned, and it bit him well for 25 years later. So we agreed to a park over in Natoma Station, what we were going to do, and he was going to design it and everything. So at that time, we had a pretty strong mayor. His name was Jack Kip. You see his name out in front, okay? Well, we talked to Jack Kip and said, "Now, do you, okay, we're going to do this, you got a contract?" "Oh, yeah, okay, good." Because I always take a witness when I talk to Jack Kip, you know? I never went by myself. And so, everything's good, and everything's going, and the park is getting built and all that good stuff, and I get a panic call from an architect that says, "The mayor says he's not paying the bill." I said, "What?" He said, "Well, we got a bill for $14,000, and this is the time when the mayor actually signed the checks." That doesn't happen no more, they stopped that real quick. But he was signing checks, and he looked at it and says, "I don't remember this, I ain't paying it." He gave Robert a bad time. Robert called me looking for help. So I mustered a couple of park commissioners, and we went down and told Jack, "You forgot something." He said, "What?" "That you approved this, and you got to pay him." And so Jack said, "Oh, yeah, that's probably right." So he did pay him, and that started Robert's career with the city. And he had a few run-ins like that. But this is a great guy, and he has done wonders for the park department, for the city and all. He actually, they pulled him off the park for a while and put him in charge of Fire Station 35. So you never know what's going on, you know? And I have a great relation, a great respect for him, and he always gave us good advice on the park commission, always. We didn't always take it, but he always gave it to us, you know? So I say to Robert, and he's not going, thank God, he changed his mind, he's going to be in the area, we can use him some more. For free. Yeah, for free. But no, I can't say more for this great guy. As to what he did for this town, and I think I did share it with everybody, that's the kind of guy we had in this town. That's pretty typical of a lot of our employees. We got a lot of guys just like him, that's making the city do what it does, you know? So, Robert, I'm not going to miss you, because you ain't going nowhere, but congratulations.
I don't know if I need this, but I just wanted to say, having grown up in the city and seeing all your work as a youth, playing in the parks, seeing Ernie Sheldon Park and everything you've done, and now sitting here working with you and seeing your ethic actually hands-on as a council member, it's a lucky experience I got to have. So I truly appreciate everything you've done and everything you've taught me in the last 24 months. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
It means a lot.
Pass the microphone. All I've got to say, Robert, is your city retirement is ahead of mine by about three months, so I'll be right behind you. But in the 16 years I've been on the council, it's been a true pleasure working with not only you, but I know the team you're so proud of in the Parks and Recreation Department. You know, we'll all agree, it's just an exceptional group of people that really have a passion for the parks and trails in this community. And on behalf of my family, who enjoyed those for all these years and continue to do so, you know, thanks for your stewardship of this asset in the community that is just so important to us. So thank you, Robert, and look forward to seeing you on the trails after my retirement. So, congratulations.
Well, I've been working with Robert in some way, shape, or form for pretty much all of the last 24 years, including your predecessor. We had some trouble way back in the old days, and you taking over that job was a huge improvement. Parks in Folsom are, in my opinion, the best in probably the entire state. Trail system's been awesome. All the fun we had, you know, convincing all the Cash family members to get involved, that was a big accomplishment, because as you know, they told both of us that 99% of the requests that they get to use their name go in the round file. So that's a huge accomplishment. I can't wait till it's all done, and I'm, again, thrilled that you're not going to Idaho. So, welcome back.
So was my mother. So, let's see if I can get through this here. 25 years is a long time, and Ernie, he had that about right. I wasn't going to get paid, and my boss at the time was having words with me, so, Mr. Mayor.
Did you get fired, and that's why you worked for them?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. This means an awful lot to me. I consider myself so fortunate over the last 25 years. I wasn't director, obviously, for that whole time, but I was beneficiary of a number of city councils that gave a lot of latitude. And when I was appointed director, and that was by Martha Lofgren, city manager at the time, I just felt so fortunate to be young at that point, but then I learned how fortunate I was to have the city councils that I worked with. And actually, one of my city council members that was there is in the audience tonight, Eric King. So, other than Eric, the only other one was Jeff Starsky. So that's the seven people I've worked for through the city manager. And I tell you what, the success I've enjoyed on behalf of this community is because of the vision of the city council bestowed upon the staff. And honestly, that's fun, you know, it really is. It's fun, fun work, so thank you for that. I have to say thank you to the city managers I worked for. I didn't know it was six, but I'll go with that. But most recently, Elaine, I'm sorry that it won't be longer, Everett for seven years, Carrie Miller for like five before that, and Martha, they gave me just enough rope that I didn't hang myself. But that's a luxury, and I consider myself very fortunate for that, to work for flexible and also visionary city managers to allow, you know, things to progress. And almost finally, I have to talk about my staff. You guys, you guys are the reason I'm here, and thank you so much. You talked an awful lot about projects. There's programs too, and those programs are really directly connected to the people of Folsom as well. And the recreation staff, we have two sides of that house plus zoo, they connect with everybody on a daily basis in the parks and on the trails. And so you guys are the reason I got this. So thank you very much for that. Only a little bit more, a little bit more. So much to my surprise, I walk in tonight, this is, I'm over 600 nights in this room. I added it up in this career, so I'm ready for a little bit of a break. But my mom and dad are here, my Aunt Sylvia, that was a surprise, thank you for showing up. So they laid the foundation of a halfway decent person, so thank you for that. And lastly, my wife.
Was that one of those debates we had?
Yeah. Lastly, Claudia, thank you for putting up with the hours and, you know, the coming home and venting on you or Molly, the dog. But she, you know, she gave me a lot of latitude to invest the energy in the job as well, so, sweetheart, thank you.
Did you then chant about sewer systems? Do you back?
She did, actually, from time to time. And so, thank you all very much. It was, I am so fortunate to have this kind of a career, to be lucky enough to work in this town and contribute to this community. It's a phenomenal community, and I'm glad we're staying too.
Yeah, me too. One last thing I'll say. And Robert touched on it, we don't do this, the five of us. We have a 500-member team, and you've been one of the most integral leaders of the team for the 24 years I've been on city council and a year and a half on planning. So, Robert, you're going to be missed, but you're not going too far, because we know where you live. And Claudia, again, thank you so much for allowing the community to use Robert for all those years and all his contributions, and for everybody sitting here and watching on TV. When you drive around town, you see the parks and trails and everything, all the other recreational amenities, please think of not only the Park and Rec staff, because you guys are awesome. I mean, I've been all over the country, we are awesome. But thank you for being the leader in the vision and the dedicated individual who's always been in this community, and I'm so glad you're not going anywhere. Those are always bittersweet, because they're always fun to do, but it's always usually because someone's leaving the family, as we say. But man, that's going to be tough to fill Robert's shoes, and I know that we'll forever be in debt and gratitude for everything that he's done, and certainly the wonderful team that still exists, and will continue to go forward with the same commitment, drive, and dedication, because you guys are just an awesome team. So thank you again, Robert. Okay, call the next item, please.
Your next item this evening is Business from the Floor. You have two requests to speak tonight. The first is from the Granite City Riders. The second request is from Don Tucker.
Okay, and Business from the Floor, so the folks that don't know what that is, it's for any item not on the agenda. So if you start asking us questions, you look like deer on headlights, it's because illegal for us to participate in question-and-answer sessions on something not agendized. However, we can get directions to staff, and certainly ask you questions, so we can make directions to staff. So with that, the first, bless you. The first person, come on up, I think it's the Granite City Riders. That must be the folks with the really cool cycles out front. I told Ernie, if we put training wheels on, you guys might get him a ride. Gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for coming down.
Right. Good evening. We are the Granite City Riders. We are a local riding club based here in Folsom. We're working professionals with friends and family who live or spend most of their time here in the community. We started several years ago as a bunch of guys who love to ride motorcycles and create great memories. While forming our club, we came up with the name Granite City, which Joseph Folsom named the city years ago until it was changed.
Love the fact that you looked up that history.
Yes. And although, you know, the City of Folsom has great history, starting with the Gold Rush, railroad powerhouse, and the prison, it led us to designing our patch to embrace one of the most iconic figures of Folsom, Johnny Cash. So if you look.
Oh, yeah.
That's very cool.
That's cool.
Well, as we ride all over the US, and we do that once a year, we take a trip, western states across the United States, you know, whatever it is, we proudly wear these, because it represents Folsom and the community we come from. So several years ago, we became aware of the Johnny Cash Art Trail, and we all talked and thought this would be a great opportunity for something to align with and help our
So we brainstormed about a way to raise money for the Johnny Cash Art Trail, and eventually we settled on planning a music and food and beer wine event. Of course, we were a little bit naive in what it would take to pull an event as this off, but with a lot of help from Robert Goss, and we're lucky that we're here tonight to acknowledge him, and then also from Judy Collinsworth from the Historic District, and Jeff Garcia and the Friends of Folsom, and a lot of volunteers and sponsors, we were able to pull this event off. We had a, we had the first annual Rock the Line event, and we hope this will become an annual event, and we will use this as a way to raise money for our community. In this case, we want to donate money specifically to the Johnny Cash Art Trail. So on the behalf of the Granite City Riders, we'd like to present you with a check for $4,200.
Wow.
And we hope that this is the first of many.
Present that to our money man.
The man on the end is the money man.
He's already drooling.
Thank you very much.
Well, gentlemen, before you leave, let us know when your next event comes up, because we'd love to host some of the advertising on our website and our Facebook page and any place we can get it out, because certainly it's a worthy cause, because it's for the community, and certainly we need, and we have currently a fundraiser going on for the enhancements for that trail. That is an unbelievable kickoff for that effort. So I want to make sure you guys get recognized in many ways. Anytime you have an event or whatever, please let us know, and we'll be more than happy to stick it on our website.
Thank you very much.
Your next speaker is Don Tucker.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't have a check to present tonight, but I do have a comment about our parks in Folsom. I agree that our parks and trail system is first-class. I live in American River Canyon North, and I have a home in the Parkway District as well, and Robert and his team do a fantastic job on maintenance and keeping our parks world-class. However, the tennis courts at Davies Park are not up to Folsom standards. The basketball courts were recently resurfaced, and they received new lighting, LED lighting, and they look fantastic. But the tennis courts are very dark at night, the lighting doesn't work very well, the surface is very worn out, and so I just want to advocate for a little bit of maintenance and maybe some small capital improvement dollars to be put into the courts to bring them up to standards. I see a lot of people using the courts, a lot of families are out there. I use the courts with my family. I happened to be there on Labor Day, and during the middle of the day, the lights were on. So there's an opportunity to save some money by maybe putting in some lighting systems that are a little more efficient and work better. So that's the reason I'm here tonight. Thank you very much for a few minutes of your time.
Thank you for bringing us our attention, and we'll make sure we have a discussion with the manager and the Park and Rec Department about that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I believe that's it on Business from the Floor. Okay, we'll move on to Schedule Presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Your next item tonight is Scheduled Presentation Item 6A. This is a presentation of the Community Service Day Steering Committee.
You realize when you're wearing the green is okay if you're Irish, but I am, that's fine, you can wear it anytime you want.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Christine Brainard, and I'm the Communications Manager with the City of Folsom, and I'm pleased to join my fellow Steering Committee members here tonight as we present our plans for the 2018 Community Service Day. The Fifth Annual Community Service Day will be held this Saturday, September 15th, from 7:00 a.m. and until noon. More than 2,500 volunteers will be completing more than, roughly 60 projects taking place throughout the city, and we've raised more than $100,000 in cash and in-kind sponsorships. This is Folsom's largest day of service and volunteerism. Nearly 60 projects will be taking place citywide, including a citywide food drive, military care packages and thank-you cards, city zoo landscaping, beautification of Folsom schools, trail stenciling, bridge building, and cleanup over at Folsom Lake. The citywide Twin Lakes Food Drive is the largest project that's taking place on Service Day, and right now volunteers are canvassing the city to deliver more than 26,000 bags to every household in Folsom. If every Folsom household donates one bag of groceries, we can feed Folsom's hungry for one year. And I wanted to share with you our video that we're promoting on social media this
From your doors to the food bank doors.
If every Folsom household donates one bag of groceries.
We can help feed Folsom's hungry for one year. This week, while you are grocery shopping for your family, consider filling this bag for another family experiencing hunger in your own community. Our goal is to inspire 20,000 Folsom households to fill up one bag of non-perishable groceries to donate to Twin Lakes Food Bank.
Go to the grocery store and fill up one bag.
Very nice.
Thank you. So we are encouraging community members to help share that video through their social media networks, and also all residents to put out that single bag of food on Community You'll notice that the Community Service Day this year has a fresh new look, thanks to community member Brian Wallace, who's designed a number of communication pieces for Community Service Day. That includes freeway signs, advertisements for local publications, flyers, and so much more. Another project that's taking place on Community Service Day is a donation drive. An organizer serving community members in need will be collecting bicycles for children and adults, glasses, yarn and fabric, and socks over at Lakeside Church from 7:00 a.m. until noon on Service Day. We have a number of neighbors helping seniors' projects taking place throughout the city, and Steering Committee member and organizer Justin Ratham will be talking a little bit more about those projects.
Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my history with Community Service Day. I was invited to be part of the founding Steering Committee five years ago, when I was part of the Young Professionals Program, and they barely let me go to the meetings anymore, because I'm about aged out of the group. I've gotten to do registration early on, until we found a team member that was even more capable of doing registration, so I got to hand that off, and I got to be involved with a number of larger construction projects, where we had to move dirt ahead of time or pour semen ahead of time, like the adult fitness station that we put in at Willow Hill Creek Reservoir, and then also the shade structure at the dog, at the dog play park. So those were some of the bigger construction projects that I got to be involved with for the Community Service Day. And then for the last two years, I've done Neighbors Helping Seniors, and I got to go out last weekend and go and walk all of the project sites. We started Neighbors Helping Seniors because we really wanted to find some projects on private property. We had a lot of nonprofit projects, a lot of projects that are on public space, but we really didn't have anything on private property, and we knew that there was a lot of people out there that could use a small crew of volunteers for the day to help out around the house. And so we started Neighbors Helping Seniors, and proud to report that we're going to have about 20 projects this year, and we've got six teams going out to complete those projects. Best weekend of my year, last weekend, I got to go out and walk and meet with all those seniors and talk to them about what they wanted done, and it was just a really special day for me, actually, two days of walking projects, going around and just saying, "Hey, I'm here, I'm here with your Community Service Day, and what can we do to help out?" So we're mainly focusing on outdoor projects, and looks like we'll complete about 20 of those on Saturday through the help of six different team leads and a crew of volunteers for each of those. I guess my takeaway message is, is we have projects out there for everybody. We've got great projects at the library for kids, we've got a wonderful project that goes on at one of the senior communities in Folsom, which is writing letters for cancer, for people undergoing cancer treatment. We've got the Neighbors Helping Seniors, which is a very physical project with people up on ladders and pressure washers and things of that nature. But really, there are projects for every single member of our community out there to get involved, of all ages, and I encourage everybody to go out there and get signed up with the remaining slots we have before Saturday.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Okay. This event wouldn't be possible without the generous support of our sponsors, including our presenting sponsors at $15,000, Intel and Dignity Health, our platinum sponsors at $10,000, gold sponsors at $5,000, silver at $2,500, and our number of bronze sponsors at $1,000, and our additional sponsors who are supporting the breakfast. So I'd like to introduce our Steering Committee members who have donated their time and talent to putting this massive undertaking together. to putting this massive undertaking together, including community member Brian Wallace, Pastor Brad Franklin with Lakeside Church, Carl Siegler with Folsom Prison, Rob Ross with Think Smart, Smart Inc., Rachel Zierin with the Folsom Telegraph, Dr. Anthony Rototo with Kaiser Permanente, Eric King, former mayor, and with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and Justin Rathel, who you've met, Angela Griffin with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, and Folsom community member and Parks and Recreation Commissioner Y.K. Trolam Charla.
She got it right.
So, there are a number of other opportunities to get involved and learn more and, and volunteer, so I encourage community members to log into FolsomCommunityService.org, and we'll see you on Saturday. That concludes my presentation.
So, before you guys all leave, I, I gotta tell you, I mean, of all the hard work that you guys constantly do, year after year after year after year, I'd like you to turn around and really get a full panorama picture so the people of this community can see that this committee starts in January. So, we get a two-month, yeah, go ahead and face the big camera out there. We start in January, we start in January to pull this off in September. We take about a month and a half to two-month breather for the holiday, and we start all over again. So, ladies and gentlemen, you need to thank these individuals for their time and efforts every year to put this thing on, to help nothing but community members, community projects, and community enhancements. So, ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a big round of applause, please.[696.82][696.82](applause) Thank you, guys, and we'll see you bright and early Saturday morning.
And, and the good news is, Steve, you'll have a little more time on your hands, so you can help out a little bit more next year.
Well, I told them that they still need to volunteer, I'll be on that side of the table still volunteering on the committee if they need me, so, thank you, guys.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, first of all, you know, this event didn't always exist in this city, as you mentioned, it's, you know, we're just a few years into this, but I, I would just like to take the moment to recognize our Mayor Steve Miklos, who, who came up with this idea with a few other folks and really pushed it along, and I, I can't imagine you would have envisioned 2,500 volunteers and 60 projects, you know, just a few years into this effort. So, so as a, as a member of this community, Steve, thank you for thinking of this and, and pushing it along, and then, and then, you know, all these folks really working so hard. I am always, you know, whenever you mention the food drive, my two boys don't live at home anymore, but my wife still thinks they do, so whenever this food drive comes along, I don't have to go to the store, I just go into the pantry and, and load up, so thank you for doing that every year as well. Thank you, Eric.
And I just want to, I just want to add to that, I think that Steve kind of stole the idea from Eric King, our former mayor, so Eric's played a, a big, big role in this for a long time, so, thanks, Eric.
Yeah, the food drive, yep. Thank you, guys.[784.04][784.04](applause)
I can just say, I wanted, I wanted to express the same thing and say thank you. Last year was the first year I contributed as a council member, got to see all the individual projects, and my seven-year-old daughter was in tow, and she got to see how hard you guys work and how much you put together. Her biggest, the two experiences she had was, that were, you know, monumental in her mind, were the food drive, seeing how many cars drive up and how much food you guys actually process and take in, and then the veterans' letters. She got to make a ton of different craft projects and put the boxes together, so if you think that it lives and dies with the work you're doing right here, it doesn't, it resonates so far in this community, and, and special thanks to you, Steve, is, I mean, you guys have created a monster, and it's an amazing monster, so it's great, so thank you.
Well, I've been fortunate, I've had a great team.
Yeah.
I was wondering what I would do on, on my 84th birthday, and I'm glad you, you arranged me to have a night today, because the 15th is, in fact, my birthday.
That's why you're going to work.
So, thank you very much for taking care of my choices, okay?[854.73][854.73](laughter)
Appreciate it, well, thank you, guys, again, we'll see you Saturday morning, and anybody still wants to sign up and participate, there's plenty of room, there will never turn anybody away.
And, Ernie?
Mm-hmm.
Happy birthday in advance, but keep in mind that it's turning 84 is way better than the alternate.
You got that right.[872.51][872.51](laughter) You told me I could come here in a wheelchair, you made me that promise.[877.79][877.79](laughter)
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the next item?
Your next item this evening is the Consent Calendar.
Anybody wishing to pull consent?
I'm gonna pull 7B. Tim, you're gonna hate me, but there's a typo in Condition 52, there's an extra "the" in there.
I wanted to pull 7G.
For B and G, and the others? Okay, so motions in order for...
So, I'll move, let's see, 7A, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, second on those.
I'm sorry, can I actually pull 7A also?
7A, okay.
Okay, so I'll revise the motion to move C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, second, call roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes, item 7A, clerk?
Item 7A is Ordinance Number 1288, an ordinance amending certain provisions in Chapter 9.69 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to the use of skate parks. This is presented for second reading and adoption.
So, I thought we were gonna come back on this one and discuss the 18 and over rules and how that pertakes to...
Well, as I understood it, we were moving this, that was the cleanup language, and then we're gonna bring this as a separate item.
Okay, so it was separate out?
It's still coming, yes.
Okay, I apologize, we can move on.
I think the next agenda, it's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's perfect.
No, that's, that's the direction I, that I took away from that.
I just wanted to make sure, so I'm good with that.
No, it's coming, no.
I'll move 1288.
A second.
Okay, call roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes.
Your next pulled item is 7B, Resolution Number 10175. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a subdivision improvement agreement and accept offers of dedication for the Prospect Ridge subdivision and approval of the final map for the Prospect Ridge subdivision.
Well, I pulled it initially, but it was just because of the typo, so I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Comments? Okay, you got a motion, second, call the item, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes.
Your last pulled item is Consent 7G. This is Resolution Number 10180, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement and declaration of covenants and restrictions with the peak on Iron Point Apartments to preserve a portion of the city property for tricolored blackbird mitigation.
Who pulled G?
I pulled G, so I just wanted to go on record and express my, or acknowledge our Commissioner Mallory, so he, he took some heat for coming up with a, maybe 28 or 30 different questions on a, on a specific item, which included mitigations for such things as tricolored blackbirds. So, it seems very small, but it's a native bird that we need to protect in a city distinctive by nature, and I wanted to just make sure that folks understood that a lot of folks are looking out for a lot of things in this city, and that was just one of them, so I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Mallory, and I thank the city for putting this on here, and I thank LA Homes for ensuring that we have a safe place for these, for these birds to actually exist, so that was really all I wanted to put on there.
Motion?
Thank you. I motion to move it, please. Second.
A motion, and so we'll give the second to Vice Mayor over here, so call roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Absolutely.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is Old Business Item 8A. This is Resolution Number 10182, a resolution approving a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approving the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience Master Plan. You recall this item has the amended resolution.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I guess it's fitting that this is the last, the last one for me, the last presentation. So, you have seen this project before several times in different formats, but this is me attempting to put a bow on it for you. So, we're, we're clearing all of the legal hurdles to the implementation of the art, public art additions to the trail. History-wise, you've actually approved two environmental analyses on this project. Resolutions 8579 and 8731 were for the trail specifically. Tonight's action is to approve the environmental clearance for the artworks. We did not contemplate those at the time that we did the environmental clearance for the trail. So, again, just bear with me, I will just introduce a few things that have changed over the years since you last saw this, but this is the overview aerial of the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience. Folsom Lake on the right, the Historic District of Folsom on the lower left, and it's two and a half miles with various art nodes, if you will, selected along the, the trail for the installation. With, with tonight's action, ultimately, you'll be able to proceed to the next agenda item, and I'll stay up here for that one, because we can't authorize a contract until we do this step first. But along the way with this project, if you'll recall, there were three park sites, or three art sites, if you will, that were on sites, or land that was, or that is owned by the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Folsom Prison. Well, as we went through the process with them, they actually were not all that enthused about having the art located on their property. So, we set about and re-engineered, redesigned the whole experience, and, and as interesting and, I think, meant-to-be projects are, it's better now than it was then. So, now we have on either end of the, of the trail, and I left my, and all of the celebration, thank you all, I left my pointer somewhere else. Let's see, does this one work? No, I'll do it, I'll do it this way. Mr. Mayor, you messed me up.
Sure, one last shot before you leave.[1256.08][1256.08](laughter)
Get him a pointer.
There we go, works. Okay, so...
Going in the basket? I know his retirement gift, engraved pointer.
Yeah, there you go.[1265.65][1265.65](laughter)
You can use it to play with the dog when you get home.
Yeah, better for the cat, I think. Okay, so, starting on the left with the Historic District, and this will be the subject of your next agenda item. On the left side of the screen is Greenback Lane or Riley Street, depending on where you are exactly are on the street. Rainbow Bridge would be just off the top of the screen up here in the framework, but there is a parallel bike trail there, and then this is the start of the Johnny Cash Trail, right there at that intersection. And for those of you who don't know where the Moose Lodge is, the Moose Lodge is right down here, right above Jim's head. So, this location is for Cass's Pick Number One, and the, the rust-colored disc that the art is located here is to emulate a vinyl record album. That was Johnny's medium, you know, across the, the entire world, was the record album. So, the pick sits right inside the center point of the record album. It's seven feet tall, it's cast bronze, it's polished to a beautiful black hue, and this is one, the, the, excuse me, the western bookend of the entire trail. The eastern bookend is up there by the lake, and we'll get that, to that at 10:00.
Robert, is that base just gonna be colored concrete?
That's Corten steel.
Again with the Corten?
Yep.
Can we do something to prevent the bleeding?
No, I like it, I like it, so, stick with it.
It's, it's gonna bleed on anything that's around it, just like it did on the bridge.
Well, we could actually control that with a expansion joint around the, the edge of the concrete, but I'm actually gonna let the next Parks and Recreation Director figure out that detail.[1367.71][1367.71](laughter)
Dave, are you on my team here?
Gotcha.
So, working our way, and I'll, real, back real quick, so we're gonna work our way from the left side of the screen all the way to Folsom Lake. So, if you'll recall, between the Rodeo Park parking lot and Liedestorf Drive, there is a double-switch-pack trail segment right there, and the next art piece fits perfectly, and this is one of the ones that was located on state property that they really didn't want to play ball with us. So, we found another better location. If you recall, if you've gone up that trail, how it ascends, and then we really can now look at 270 degrees of the artwork here, this is actually a perfect spot for this art piece, because this is the piece that once you stand in that one certain location that Johnny's silhouette snaps into view and is made out of all those vertical black rods and the laser-etched steel that will align if you're standing and kind of X marks the spot, that will all line up and that image will snap into, to focus. Working our way up the trail even further, on the right side of the screen is the start of the, the new Robbers Ravine Bridge, so this is that wide area where Karen's Bakery and Cafe had the kitchen set up during the bridge dinner. So, that, we kept that purposefully, and that during construction was the crane pad that lifted the crane, or, excuse me, lifted the bridge into place, and that was just too much good real estate after we built the structurally sound pad for the crane to just give it up. So, we've kept it, and now we are going to tweak the Greystone Chapel artwork and adapt it to the granite wall, the retaining wall that was built right along this alignment right here, and then we're gonna have some black granite cast, excuse me, black granite clad, they're not obelisks, but vertical panels that will have different text from Johnny's song lyrics, and then these, the concept here is the deconstructed walls of the Greystone Chapel Church inside the prison, and these bronze plates will be affixed to the natural rock wall that was constructed here, and these were excerpts of letters that inmates wrote to Johnny after the concert, because they, they were so impactful, or his concert was so impactful to the inmates.
So, that'll be recessed right there with the song lyrics on the, on the actual ground?
Well, the artist has some details to work out, but these not recessed, this is actually vertical, and these are just aligned across the, the art, art piece here, but the idea that's what's working in here, that these could be considered an abstract form of the pews of the Greystone Chapel Church, and there's, I mean, the artists really should be here to describe this as opposed to me, but I think a tremendous improvement again, because this was a piece on state property that is now on city property, which I think is better in the long term for the project. Next up is Rusty Cage. You recall that that is a 17-foot-tall triad of Martin guitar necks, and the artist's concept was that this piece would be up on a knoll, and if you see the topography lines right here, this is the prison-side end of the Robbers Ravine Bridge right here, and all these topography lines are indicating that this is a beautiful knoll surrounded or topped by native blue oak trees. And there's what that image will, will look like as you're walking up that walkway to the top of the knoll where the actual art piece is. So, again, you can, from the trail point here, the paved trail, there'll be a nice walk to get up to this location, and you can imagine, whoops, looking up the, the knoll towards these very tall, 17-foot-tall guitar necks. They're set at the base at the scale of a Folsom Prison cell, and I, as I recall, that is six by eight, so they are set very narrowly on the ground, but they're 17 feet tall for scale.
Same comment if you're using...
Same comment if you're using Corten again, and the other thing, back to the pick, because I know we got another pick coming up. If that pick, if the bronze material is not electrically isolated, not physically in contact with the Corten, the, it, it has to be physically not in contact with it, otherwise it will extremely accelerate corrosion of that Corten.
Right.
Because despite your belief, Corten corrodes.
Yeah. So, along the existing trail, and this is that rock excavation parallel to East Natomas Street, this is Ring of Fire, the, this is the 12-foot diameter welded assembly of stainless steel guitar picks, so we're not gonna have the Corten problem here, because it's stainless steel. So, there really is no setting...
That, and it's the closest one to my neighborhood, so...
Very appropriate, then. So, this one is envisioned to be anchored right into this rock right here, so there is no setting, this is just for scale up there to show how big this is, the, the piece is, so it'll be very visible from both drivers on the road as well as cyclists and pedestrians on the trail. Here's the Legacy Park, you've seen this image before, there's no significant changes to that, you know what happens in the sound hole of the guitar right there, and that's the Large Johnny, so this year with the 2018 Amgen Tour California, we put up the banner to test the scale, and we, we wanted to do a land art stunt for TV, and it made it onto TV, which we accomplished that goal, but behind that objective was testing the scale of the site. So, that banner is at 30 feet, and so here we have a 25, a 25-foot Johnny and a 40-foot Johnny on a granite base, so now we understand a little bit about the scale of that artwork.
I was just gonna say, I've, I've heard a lot of feedback from residents on the current artwork pieces there, and they're, they're kind of skeptical about the height of this, the new one proposed, because I think the base is 10 feet, the statue is 40, so a total of 50 feet.
Right.
And what kind of outreach has been done as far as with those, I mean, it's, it's very premature now, but when it actually happens, I think we need to make sure...
I, I think when we, we actually do that, there's gonna be a, a very appropriate opportunity to engage the community again to examine, do we want 25 and, or, and 10, or, or, I think it's 25 and 8, or 40 and 10, and I think the, the 30-footer is indicative that probably 50 total feet might be a little big.
And then the last thing on this, what's the, as far as artwork goes on this just estimation, what's the timeline on this versus the rest? I know the picks are coming in first, but what's the...[1773.11] I know the pics are coming in first, but what's the...
Well, the hurdles that we're clearing here tonight, if the council chooses to adopt this, is that there are no technical hurdles left, it's only funding. So, the second item on the agenda on this topic is to authorize contract for fabrication of the first Pic Number One. That's the first of eight artworks and a park. It's an $8 million vision, we're about, we're gonna be about $400,000, $450,000 into it, so we have a little ways to go.
$459,200, according to tonight.
Thank you.
The $4,200 from tonight.
Oh, correct, right.
Hey, Robert, quick question, because I've gotten a couple of community members asking it, and I don't know the answer. Were we planning on lightening this thing at night, and it's so, well, first, are we planning on lightening this thing at night?
Yes, so here's the daytime shot.
Okay.
And there was the inspiration for the daytime shot. And here's the nighttime, or the evening shot, and there's the inspiration. Now, I have another image where the sky is black and Johnny is lit inside, I just ran out of slides.
So, low, and that's what a lot of neighbors are saying, you know, how is it gonna be lit and how visible is it gonna be? I'm assuming low-level LEDs, internally?
Yeah, the idea is to light up the flame, now, my red pointer, yeah, it does work on red.
Yeah.
The idea is to light up the flames, not have a black Johnny lit up at night.
Okay.
Yeah. The horse sculptures there are in Spain, and I think the, they are 75 or 80 feet tall, so if you ever get to Spain, that's something clearly worth seeing. Working our way up the trail, now we're up to the Johnny Cash Bridge up here. This is the seventh art site, and this is Hello, I'm Johnny Cash. So, if you've been up there, and I think most people have, there's really a nice promontory overlooking Folsom Prison property up there. And the idea is to develop, again, another round form for a more traditional sculpture of Johnny, taken from the very famous Jim Marshall picture on the left there. And then finally, we get all the way up to where the Johnny Cash Trail hits Folsom Lake Crossing, so Folsom Lake Crossing Road is on the left side of the screen here. Folsom Lake is literally where it's blue up here, it's very close to the lake, and this is a beautiful view, and you know this if you drive your car towards Placer County as you come up the rise. This art location is right at the peak of that rise, so there's a beautiful view of the trail there, and this is meant to be a respite, to take advantage of that view and provide the setting for the Pic Number Two. So, that is the revised master plan for the Johnny Cash Trail. It was the subject of our initial study of mitigated negative declaration. There are no long-term impacts that require mitigation, the only impacts are short-term construction-related impacts. We did a 500-foot noticing for the project that resulted, frankly, quite few residents. They were centered up near East Natomah and Briggs Ranch, and near the water treatment plant, and down at, on Liedesdorf and River, what's that neighborhood called, River? Should've written it down. But just right below the rodeo park.
The Little Gaty Community?
Correct. So, those were where the residents were, and then we had federal landowners, state landowners, and of course, we have some land along those areas as well. So, we did that notification, we received zero comments. The item before you is to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration, as well as the mitigation monitoring program, and approve the master plan that I just presented.
Okay, any comments, questions to Robert?
Yeah, I, I've got one, Robert. The thing that I keep hearing from everybody is, and maybe we can tell in public today and whatever commitments are, is the funding.
Right.
Okay, how much have we achieved in fundraising to date? And what's our commitment with the Johnny Cash Foundation as to when do they kick in allowing us to go worldwide for fundraising? What's the level, because everybody's asking.
Sure. Well, we are well over $300,000 raised to date, and you will obligate some of that money, again, tonight if you approve the next item. You have previously obligated contracts for RRM Design Group for the landscape design of all of the art node sites, so that was about a $65,000 contract. You also previously authorized our artist, Don Romo from Sacramento, to prepare the mold for the pics, and that was just the mold, because that's a very detailed process. Tonight's proposed contract award is to actually cast the bronze pic and polish it to its final luster, as well as install it. The remaining task is to build the small landscape setting there along Riley Street, Greenback Lane, just above Rainbow Bridge, right there at that intersection of the two sites. And we have sufficient funding for the materials of that project. It's about a 4,000-square-foot installation of principally concrete, the Corten steel deck, landscaping, irrigation. We have sufficient money to do that, and we believe that the most efficient way to do that now, so that we can get this art place in, is to have staff construct that. But it's only a 4,000-square-foot space, it's quite small, and we have the, frankly, we have the talent to do that. It's not a huge undertaking. So, long-term, the Cash, it's the John R. Cash Revocable Trust, that is our partner on this, they will unlikely ever write a significant check on this. What they are doing is lending assets for our use, just by endorsing the project, that is one demonstration of that commitment. They have assisted in any number of ways, and the next one that you will likely hear, you heard about it in previous enclosed session, just the concept of a Johnny Cash Museum in Folsom. That project is alive and doing very well. I expect that you will see that again in the near term. So, they are lending assets there. That is a revenue-positive proposal, and the trust is amenable to that revenue being focused on this project, the art trail.
I don't wanna be a naysayer, but I've raised a lot of money in this town, and what you're saying is nowhere near $8 million. And I'd say on the museum aspect as to, of course, you probably haven't got the details, and I don't expect to hear them tonight, but what, the arrangement with the Johnny Cash for the museum, it's great that we raised money for the Johnny Cash Foundation, but that ain't helping us get these artwork done. So, I, you know, every time you take money out of this town, you take it away for some other projects that this town's doing. All I'm saying is, I need to be satisfied so I can pass it on in a competent manner to people asking me that we do have a thing that's not gonna drain everything here for Johnny Cash, and we don't get that support from the foundation. Okay, now, if they allow you to go worldwide and everybody thinks that would bring a bunch of money...
We've been given that green light. We've been given that green light.
So, what's your plan on starting for that?
That has to be done through crowdfunding, if that's the plan, but let me make, let me be clear, the, any net profits of the museum operation, the trust is amenable to that staying in Folsom for this project. I think I heard you say that it was going back to them. They're going to make an upfund investment, is the current concept, and there will be some shared revenue, but once that upfund investment is repaid, that this revenue is staying here for this project.
Okay.
Okay? And I need to plug public art in this town. Public art, just like any other project or program or service, is an eligible expense of a general fund, it's a matter of city council priority. I mean, it's plain as simple as that. Measure E, if that were to pass this November, this is a community enhancement, if you will, this project would certainly be fit that definition. So, there are a number of ways for this to happen, but it isn't all defined today, and it wasn't defined five years ago when we started the project. But we're a lot further along today than we were five years ago.
I guess I'm just, I just had, five years ago, I thought that once we hit a certain milestone, that the foundation said we had to show good pay, and they would kick in and the money would flow from that area.
There's never been that particular arrangement, it's more leveraging, a careful leveraging of the cash assets to our benefit, and they have fulfilled that. And they continue to fulfill it.
I gotta jump in, one of the biggest, sorry, Roger, one of the biggest fulfillments of what you just said is the fact we don't have to pay the royalties to use the Johnny Cash name in everything we're doing. That in itself is worth millions of dollars, and that's where they jumped in, they've never asked us to pay for any royalties to use the name. And so, I hear what he's saying, so that's why the arrangement is, with their, some of their capital outlays, those rules are governed by their foundation. So, they're kind of hand-tied there, and I have no problem sharing revenue to pay up that capital thing. But we're, I'll say it, we're blessed, the fact that we can put Johnny Cash on that bridge, Johnny Cash name on that trail, and we've never had to pay for it, because of their generosity.
Two weeks ago, Josh Mattis, the trust manager, day-to-day manager that I interface with on a regular basis, he said to me, he said, "It is very clear to us now," us being the trust, "that there is a significant place in Cash's career based in California, and it ought to be recognized in Folsom." That was a huge statement for him to make, that we're beyond the whole proving ourselves, now we're an asset to them. And of course, they, you know, the trust's name and legacy is an asset to the city of Folsom.
So, you'll watch it while I'm long gone?
You better watch it, because a lot of people are gonna say $8 million, and it's all on the come, as they say in poker. Okay.
But nobody's suggesting that that check is written tonight.
Understand.
And I don't think it's taking away from any program, because you hit it right on the head, this has also been led by the Arts and Cultural Commission in collaboration with the Park and Recreation Commission, so this is the art aspect, whereas the trail was the park and rec aspect. So, I really think this, as you said, it's another investment in art in the public spaces.
Yeah, I agree, I have no problem...
But I don't think we're not gonna take anything off away from anybody else.
I have no problem with public art.
Yeah, I know you don't.
Okay, we've probably been a while backwards on that for a lot of years, it's catch-up time, but public art isn't only Johnny Cash.
That's true.
So, we have to balance the books.
It's just a matter of priorities.
And I was gonna agree with Mayor Miklos, is the green light was essentially giving us the confidence that you built a solidified platform to roll this out, and this isn't just a trail, this is like a hybrid tourism, living art experience, it's super organic. And one of the reasons why I was shocked that you're retiring, which I think you should reconsider, was the vision of this type of...
I'm not going to.
It takes a lot to put this through, and to get the confidence of something like the Johnny Cash Trust to allow you to not only use the Cash name, but to, you know, engage in crowdfunding and some of the stuff you explained, that perhaps would be, you know, showing some of those mechanisms you haven't released yet, but you've talked about, to see this go through, and it's not an overnight, you know, journey, it's something that's gonna go on and on and on and on, but it's gonna attract a kind of tourism that other cities can't even compete with, this thing is gonna be amazing. So, there certainly should be a watchful eye on it, but to your point, it's, the green light was the confidence, it wasn't the...
Yeah, and I would just like to point out that we're getting help from places that we had hoped, but, you know, hope is never really, it doesn't come to fruition until a check is written. Sacramento County Supervisor Sue Frost, through the TOT program, she sponsored this project to the tune of $50,000, and we have received that, we actually have to do a reimbursement on that, but we're already engaged in that reimbursement. Visit Folsom as a sponsor of this very first pic to the tune of $50,000. I can't speak for them, but I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the last time that they'll help us with the project, because it is clearly something of interest to people far beyond the limits of 95630.
And I think we need to add to that, that we've had the cooperation of the family, this goes back to, what is, 2012, I think?
Yeah, about there.
2011, 2012, we've had the cooperation of the family, we've had communication with Roseanne, with Cindy, and that's basically what opened up the door to the foundation being willing to listen to us. As I said when we were talking earlier, 99% of the requests that go into the Cash, to the Cash family and all of the associated organizations that they have control over, go in the trash. And they have been very, very engaged with the city of Folsom from the time that we first went to them about using the name. So, that's a very significant thing.
I don't argue any of the points you made, I agree everything you said, but the bottom line, when you get down to it, the money comes. And they're no dummies running that foundation, obviously, they're no dummies. So, basically what we were doing, we're gonna fund the $8 million out of our efforts, which is fine, using that name, which they are confident that we'll get it done, and not have a half-baked, half of something that won't help the Johnny Cash history. So, I think it's okay, but the bottom line is, it's still $8 million, this town's gotta come up with.
But, no, but I think we, there's a little bit of a disconnect here, because Robert has explained that it's looking very likely that that museum is gonna go forward, and that in and of itself is gonna generate a fair amount of revenue, that wouldn't, that revenue stream would not have been there otherwise.
It will also generate sales tax and so on. And I think one of the beautiful things for, about this project, for this city council, the next city council, and subsequent city councils, is that it could be stopped at any moment, at any project, and it's okay. It's okay today as it is. If you approve the next item, we're gonna have the first art piece in. If that's the last one that's done, that's okay. It's legit now, it's two and a half miles, it's two of the most beautiful bridges in Sacramento County, as long as you don't ask Dave, and, because he has his own favorite bridges. But, you know, you have, you'll have a stunning art piece where 20,000 cars a day drive by it, and who knows how many hundreds and thousands of bicycles, you know, a week go by, and it could stop right there, and it would be okay. I think it will get incrementally better with each art piece that you add, and if the park is built.
And the fact that frankly, just the building of the trail itself has attracted news internationally. You know, how, how many people can say that they built a pedestrian bike bridge that made it into newspapers in Europe? Not a lot, is my guess.
Let me be the devil's advocate, and I want the cultural arts people, I'm not against it, I'm all for it, but to answer Councilwoman Howe, who in the hell cares what's in Germany? I mean, I'm facing them...
Ernie, what I mean is, what it relates to is people know that this trail exists, and people are coming here because of it.
There's an impression level value that the city maintains, and that's what attracts tourism and Councilwoman Howe, not to disagree with you, but it is important, I mean, Amgen's one of the prime examples of, why would we have Amgen and tie up the whole city? Well, it's because we're shown on, you know, worldwide media, and it shows what kind of level of playing field we're on at this point in the 95630. So, this is one of those organic pieces, I just wanna move the item if I can, if we're...
Yeah, I've got a motion, a second, I do have one other comment or questions.
Sorry, councilman.
Yeah, just to that, the point that's been made recently, I mean, we just had the Granite City writers here and decided their logo on the back was gonna include Johnny Cash there. So, my only comment, Robert, is you mentioned the reluctance for Promture, very good reasons of CD, CR, for not wanting the artwork actually on their property, but we do need to continually thank them for the easements that they allowed the bike trail itself to move across their property, so I just wanna make sure they get some...
They've been a very good partner in this project, they just aren't in the art business.
And I know you always share that, and I just wanted to make sure we ended on that note with Folsom Prison, so...
And Mr. Mayor, may I just clarify, that's for the revised Resolution 10182?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got a motion, any further discussion or questions? Thank you, Robert. Sir, if you wanna speak on it, you're gonna fill out a blue slip and then bring it down. Did you wanna speak on this item?
Yes.
Fill out a blue slip, speaker card, bring it down.
I'll stop raising my hand.
No, no, but if you wanna come down, well, I'm giving you the opportunity before we move on to the next item. You go ahead and speak now, just give me your name for the record, and just fill out the card, right in front of the microphone. There you go, right there.
Kellen Brown, and I live a block away, and I just wanted to clarify what's going on with the proposed, as you mentioned, they might rust a little bit, the landmark, or whatever you wanna call them, I was wondering if they might be made functional? If you could have some, I understand we've branded ourselves Johnny Cash, Folsom is now Johnny Cash, so that's fine, but can we make those into swings or something? You know, something, excuse me, something that kids can enjoy, you know, since we're a family town?
That's something to consider, certainly.
Okay, that's all.
Very good suggestion, no, thank you, very good suggestion. So, like Robert said, you know, this is a, this is a long-term project, and in evolutions as we go, so that's a very good suggestion, I'm sure the park and rec people will look into that one. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second, please call and roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes, okay, next item, please, and that was as revised, as announced earlier.
Got it. Your next item is Old Business, Item 8B. This is Resolution Number 10181, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant professional services agreement with Romo Studios LLC for the casting of Cash's Pic Number One for the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience Project and appropriation of funds.
Shall we just go ahead and move the item?
I'll move it.
Yeah, thank you, it would ordinarily be a consent item.
Yeah, so I've motioned, so we'll take Roger to the second, any questions or comments to Robert? Call and roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. So, thank you for that, Robert. Next item, please.
Your next item is New Business, Item 9A. This is Presentation of Zoning Code Standards Regarding Accessory Structures and Direction to Staff.
Okay, good evening, Pam.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the city council, Pam John...
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. I have a presentation for you about the zoning standards that exist today as they relate to accessory buildings and structures, which we, we really use interchangeably. And it's an opportunity to request any direction that the council sees fit. No specific action item required or recommended. We have about a 10-minute presentation prepared. And the goal is to help you understand more about the breadth of these structures, what they are and why we regulate them, explain what the existing standards are and how that relates to other jurisdictions in our region, exceptions that are made. And as outlined in the staff report, this ties back to a code enforcement case on the Ainsworth Treehouse. And it's an opportunity for you to consider those specifics and provide any direction accordingly. First, it's important to understand the definition of accessory structure as outlined in our Folsom Municipal Code. So accessory buildings are detached structures. So if this is an arbor or something that's attached to a main building, it's not considered or falls, does not fall into the definition of a, of an accessory structure. So it's incidental to the main building on the same lot. And primarily, we're talking about residential accessory structures. That's what the vast majority of accessory structures are within the city. However, we also have accessory structures on non-residential property within the city. The focus again this evening is on residential properties. So as you can see here in the secondary definitions of buildings and structures, they're really used interchangeably. And that definition is broad intentionally, and that's something that you find as a common thread across accessory structure buildings and buildings and structure definitions because they're also defined in the, buildings and structures are also defined in the Building Code, California Building Code. What's challenging...
Go back and say that last line a little slower so everybody can hear exactly what you said about the California Building Code.
So buildings and structures are defined in the California Building Code and our definition is consistent with those definitions.
That's a very important distinction.
Is there any, like, treehouse reference in that code?
There is no treehouse reference. We do, and I'll get into this a little bit later, we do have the words "treehouse" in one part of our code, but it's not, there's a whole range of structures that fall into this category. And like many things in our zoning code, we oftentimes don't get into the details of a definition because we can't possibly anticipate. These zoning regulations live for oftentimes 10, 20, 30 years and we can't possibly think of the, you know, the she shed or the he shed or the man cave, you know, as something that would all fit into this category. And so there's a reason why we do broad categories. It doesn't always make it easy, and I'm sure the Asola family will explain that challenge for them when, when they have an opportunity to speak. So I'm gonna go through just six slides that show images of the types of structures that fall into this category of detached accessory building. The first is storage sheds, and so they can be, you know, a broad range of materials and colors and sizes. Some of them are prefabricated and some of them are custom. They generally are for storage of things like tools and, and landscape.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yep.
If you go back, the one on the top right? That is an example of an accessory structure or a storage shed that would not currently be allowed in Folsom because that looks like it's right on the property line?
That's correct.
Okay.
Another example or category of accessory buildings and structures is play structures. So you can see here a broad range of, again, prefabricated kits and custom structures. Sometimes they are enclosed, sometimes they're wide open, and so there's a broad range. And this used to be a narrower category of structures, but people are getting really creative about how to do these in their backyard. Another example or category is shade structures, and this can include kind of open-air types of trellises and arbors like you see in the lower-left corner, prefabricated gazebos as you see in the lower-right corner, and then roofed shade structures that are used oftentimes to have kind of an outdoor living or entertaining space. Here's examples of structures that are partially or fully enclosed. And you can see that kind of traditionally, these have been like guest houses, detached, you know, pool houses and detached garages. And now a lot of folks use these types of structures for, you know, a studio or an outdoor workspace, or as you can see in the upper-right-hand corner, like a mini-bar setup, right? And so they're, they're really wide-ranging and they all fit into the category of accessory structures or buildings. Here's another category that shows accessory buildings or structures that house plants and/or pets. And so greenhouses, you know, mini-nurseries, indoor gardens, animals' homes and kennels. And then finally, a category that shows raised decks, and oftentimes these are detached. Sometimes they are attached to a house. And then a wide range of treehouses. And again, you know, 40 years ago, when any of us had treehouses, they looked more typically like the, you know, the bottom row in the right, and now they're getting much more elaborate. And, and the rules and regulations that apply to them are not always known. And so we have regulations in place. I'm gonna talk for a minute about why we regulate these. So why do we care about these structures in the backyard? And the first thing is that we're exercising our police power to zone for land use compatibility. So this is a matter primarily of protecting privacy enjoyment of private yard areas and visual impact. So things that are generally above a fence line. A typical privacy fence is six feet tall. So a lot of jurisdictions regulate things that are taller. Make sure that if there's structures that are over a certain height, that you're considering the light and air impact and visual impact on adjoining properties primarily. It's also a situation where we have habitable and non-habitable structures that need to deal with compatibility. We have second dwelling unit regulations that are separate from accessory structures while they generally fall into that category. We also have additional regulations that apply to formal second dwelling units within properties. I can't move on without talking about the, the safety issue. So in addition to, again, the land use compatibility issue, we address both building safety and, or building code and fire code safety issues through our regulations. So oftentimes, you'll see zoning regulations that parallel the building code setback requirements for combustibility. So if you have a combustible structure right up against a fence and it's over the fence height, the fire code says that's a problem, right? So we, part of the setback requirements that we're gonna talk about in a moment have to do with that, that safety factor of combustibility. And then finally, there's kind of a broad category of things that local jurisdictions regulate, like the massing of these structures in a backyard. So typically jurisdictions want any accessory structure to really be smaller than, in scale, than any primary structure. So you address things like lock coverage and height to make sure that it does appear and function as a secondary type of, of structure. Now, there's also a lot of regulations about drainage and making sure that we have enough pervious surface in the backyard. So you see that type of thing coming up in jurisdictions, even in front yards, where you don't wanna pave driveways all across the front yard because you're losing a lot of pervious surface and it doesn't look good, right? The same type of thing in the backyard. You wanna make sure you're keeping the structures and the covered area to a relative minimum on a lot. So Folsom's current standards, we have two sets of standards. One, outside of the historic district, and then there are some special regulations within the historic district. So outside of the historic district, which is where the, the treehouse is located that we're gonna talk about in a little bit, there is a minimum setback requirement of five feet for accessory structures from rear and side property lines. There's also a setback requirement between primary building or the main house and accessory buildings of eight feet. There's a maximum height of one story and 15 feet for all accessory structures in the city of Folsom and a maximum rear yard lock coverage of 50%. Building permits are required for structures that are greater than 120 square feet, so 10 by 12. That's a pretty generous size, and a lot of tough sheds and things like that are at or below that height limit. So a lot of people don't know that that's something that's regulated by the city, don't know that they need to come in and get a building permit for them. But even if we don't require a building permit for these structures, we still wanna make sure that they are meeting the setback requirements and any relevant building code requirements. In the, in the historic district, a couple of things that are a little bit unique. We have minimum setbacks from front property line that apply within the historic district. Same front, side and rear yard property line setbacks, with the exception that there are, there is the allowance for a reduction from five feet to three feet for landscape features. The setback between structures was reduced from eight feet to six feet. And a lot of times, what that will do is take kind of an old standard in the building code for distance between structures and account for eaves and overhangs into that area. In the historic district, there is a more generous size requirement so that they just want this accessory structures to be not bigger or taller than the primary structure. And that was done in a lot of ways from a design perspective to make sure you could match roof pitches and things like that. Within the historic district, same requirement, building permits that are bigger than 120 square feet have to have a building permit, but there's also a design review requirement for structures that are greater than or equal to 60 square feet. So in the historic district, design review is required. Outside of the historic district, design review is not required, just building permits, right? And again, if it's less than 120 square feet, they're not required. So as mentioned, we don't have an easy way for someone to go to our code and search treehouses and easily get to understand what the regulations are. We do have a reference to treehouse, but only in the historic district. We have, I've pulled up an example of a flyer that we have, both hard copies and electronic copies posted on our website for accessory structures. But you would have to know that the category of what you wanted to have regulated falls into this classification. So we try to make it easy. We make ourselves available to advise anybody about building code requirements and setback requirements and things like that, even if they don't require a building permit. So we get a lot of calls, we get a lot of visits. And then frankly, there's also people like the Asolas that didn't know and they didn't know to call or come in, and so they didn't know the regulations. So we're here because we have a, an existing treehouse on Ainsworth in Lexington Hills along Oak Avenue Parkway, and we received an anonymous complaint through Seek Click Fix. And our code enforcement officers went out, like they do, and noticed that the setbacks in the, of this accessory structure and the height of the accessory structure don't meet our standards. And so they issued a violation notice.
Was there actually a complaint or was there, what was the, the nature of the complaint? Was it like...
I have our code enforcement officer. What I understand and recall from the meetings that we've had with the Asola family is that it was a picture and a, you know, is this allowed kind of a thing? And it was just a Seek Click Fix picture, right?
So question versus complaint or complaint?
We respond to all of those types of things and go out and investigate, right? So, and, and again, I'll have, if, if Pete can clarify if necessary. So we go out to the property and notify the property owner of the, you know, of the requirements, and they're obviously, you know, upset because they put a lot of time and energy into the structure. And they're asking, and we've sat down and talked about really, that's a, I'm gonna go to the next slide. So the specific circumstances of the Ainsworth Treehouse. I think it's important to point these out and we'll probably refer back to it as we're going. And if the Asolas wanna pull up any of these slides while they're, they're talking, we can definitely do that. So the treehouse is 21 feet tall, which exceeds the 15-foot height limit. It's set back one foot from the rear property line and less than five feet from the side property line. The treehouse is, you can see in the lower right-hand corner here, it's anchored to and bolted to the, the city sound wall. And, you know, the property owners offered to, you know, remove that right away when we said that's not allowed. And we said, gosh, you know, because this is cantilevered from the tree, we're not really sure about the structure. So don't take it off yet till we've kind of decided exactly what to do here. So they know that it's not supposed to be bolted to the city sound wall. There are other building code requirements. If, you know, they had called and we had an opportunity to talk about it, we would've said things like any platform that's above the, the 30 inches requires a railing of some type. And so there's a couple of places where we would've said from a safety perspective, the code says, you know, you need to have a railing. But it's less than 120 square feet, so it doesn't require a building permit. Again, still has to meet the, the building code requirements. And if we were looking and evaluating this, our building official is also a structural engineer and would've said, let's see some structural calcs. I know you've got a, a kit for this, but if you've, show us the structural calcs, we can look at that and help you determine whether this is actually structurally sound. So typically, code enforcement cases for accessory structures are just like this. Something was built without a permit and doesn't meet the standards. So this is not, you know, the first time in the history of the city that this type of thing has happened. It's not an easy fix is really why we're here, right? Because they either have to relocate, to meet the existing standards, they either have to remove or relocate the structure to meet the current standards. And here we are, right on the heels of our general plan update, and we're embarking on a zoning code update. And, and they've asked for, you know, gosh, what are the, the options? We get it, we understand that we, we pay, you know, we may have to remove this structure. And so what are the, you know, what are the options? And we talked about, you know, that they could ask for text amendments. There's not really an exception for them to ask for an exception without a variance, and there aren't really hardship findings for a variance. And so with the zoning code update in mind, we came forward to the city council to give you an opportunity to, you know, consider these types of things. And really, if the majority of you wanna provide direction in some way, then, you know, we're, we're happy to talk about that and, and move forward. But at the end of the day, there are exception, or there are things that we won't be able to do because of the building code, right? So I have our, not, not just our building official here, but Felipe Rodriguez, our fire chief, is here to talk about any fire code requirements as it relates to this type of structure or any changes that the city council might wanna consider. So this explains that, again, building permits are required for any structures greater than, or equal to or greater than 120 square feet. Or if someone had an existing structure in their backyard and they wanted to add electrical, plumbing or mechanical work, they would have to come in and get that type of permit from the city. And again, we would look and evaluate and make sure that they, they meet all of the standards in the city's code and the building code. Decks that are over 2,000 sweet, 2,000 square feet and/or 30 inches above grade have to get a building permit. So in this case, we have some platforms that are higher and we would just make sure that those comply with our building code requirements. Accessory structures that are less than five feet to a property line need to be constructed of a one-hour fire-rated construction. So that's to address the combustibility. And in talking with the fire chief over the last several days, we understand that if the structure is less than six feet in height so that the privacy fence contains the combustibility, that it would be allowed in the fire code to be closer to the property line. So there are some exceptions in the fire code for low-profile structures, but our zoning has a five-foot setback requirement.
And that's for auxiliary structures or is there a definition or like type of thing with regards to like mitigating if it doesn't have electrical or power?
Well, that requires a permit if it has any kind of electrical...
Yeah, there's, and, and whether it's habitable or not habitable, the accessory structure setback is the same for the city of Folsom. So I wanna talk just for a minute about some regional comparisons so that you can get an understanding of, of what we're looking at. So here on this list, Folsom's at the top, and there are nine other cities in one county on this list. And what you can see from these, kind of four primary categories of standards in our zoning regulations that were pretty close to the other jurisdictions in our region. The maximum height ranges from 10 to 18 feet, with the average being really 15 or 16 feet, just like Folsom has. That the, the minimum distance to property lines or the setback requirement is between three and 10 feet and, you know, primarily five. And again, that's consistent with what the city of Folsom has. The minimum distance between structures ranges from four to 10, and the average is five or six. So Folsom is a little bit greater than the, than the average here. And then maximum lock coverage ranges from, from 30 to 60, and we're right, right in the zone there. So just for an understanding of how these types of structures are regulated in our particular region, this is, this is consistent with the expectation. region, this is consistent with the expectation of how things are done in the Sacramento region. Within those exceptions, oh, sorry.
Right. In regards to this specific structure, is it, you said less than five. What's the actual width from the actual wall it is?
It's one foot from the rear wall, and it's about four feet, two feet from the side. I knew it was less than five, I just didn't know what the number is. It's about two, yeah, two feet. So in some of these other communities, I think it's important to identify where exceptions are, because that's essentially what's being asked, the council's being asked to consider whether you would want to change standards or establish any particular exception. So the types of exceptions that we have found, and we looked not just in these jurisdictions, but really a kind of a broad net across California, is that in some cases, communities decided that the maximum height of accessory structures could be increased so long as the corresponding setback from the property line was also increased. And this is a way to address that light and glare impact, right? The visual impact of a structure. So if you had a structure that was 20 feet tall and you had a 15-foot height limit, then rather than being five-foot setback, you'd have to be 10-foot setback. So one additional foot of setback for each additional foot in height. And that's a pretty common standard, which just says, if you're going to be higher, be further setback from the property line, so it has less impact on an adjoining property. There are also jurisdictions like El Grove where they allow the height of the accessory structure to be the same maximum height as the primary structure, so long as it's in the primary building envelope. And this makes sense when you have larger lots, where you don't maximize that building envelope. But in more traditional 5,000 or 6,000 square foot lot areas, then that doesn't actually matter, because in most cases, you're maximizing your building envelope with your primary structure. The other category of exceptions that's listed here is low-profile structures. So many of the jurisdictions have come up with exceptions or reduced setback standards for structures that are less than 120 square feet and shorter. So six, seven, and eight feet are really what we've found throughout California where they've done exceptions, and the local examples are listed here. And then finally, there's two jurisdictions, Sacramento County and Citrus Heights, where they have standards, they have allowed for exceptions to be requested through an entitlement that's not a variance. And as I mentioned earlier, in the city of Folsom, the process would be to ask for a variance. And as you all know, that means you have to have a hardship that applies to your property that doesn't apply to other folks that have a similar circumstance. So in this case, you know, if the neighboring property wanted to come in and do the same type of exception, we would set a precedent by allowing an exception on this lot, because there's nothing really unique about the property that doesn't also apply. And the types of things that qualify as unique hardships are like preservation of a heritage oak tree, unusual grading of a lot, you know, a drainage corridor or creek, or something impacting the property in an unusual way, right? So kind of the last slide that I'll put up here for your considerations is that, you know, generally, these standards work. And I believe that if the Asolas came in and asked us, they would not have built this structure the way they built it. They would have complied with the standards that are in place. And unfortunately, it's not an easy structure to move the way it is. Any text change that we would do to the city zoning code for this particular treehouse situation would apply to other accessory structures. So if we, in other words, if we allowed an increase to the building height, we would be allowing an increase to the building height for all accessory structures in the backyard. So that's a, it's a bigger consideration than just one exception, right? And then if council directs text amendments, that we need to make sure that the building and fire code requirements are still being met. In this case, it's really the setback distance for a combustible structure. So again, one foot from the property line, when it extends that far above the fence line is a consideration. And a question about, you know, structural calculations, the way it's, I want to say cantilevered, and that may be, I'm not sure if that's an appropriate representation. But, you know, it's attached to the city's sound wall, and I don't know that that's critical to the structure of the, you know, of the treehouse. But we would need to understand, you know, we would need to understand that. And then finally, again, right now, we don't have a vehicle for exceptions other than the variance. And so those are the types of things that, you know, we're putting forward for council consideration. And again, I'm happy to pull up any slides or answer any questions. We have the code enforcement supervising, code enforcement officer Pete Picardo. We have Scott Zangrando, our building official, who's also a structural engineer, and our fire chief to answer any questions.
Any questions, Pam, first?
Are you, can we, is Pete going to come up or?
Pete, do you want to answer the question about the?
Okay, so Pete, he has a quick question.
Yeah, how the C Click Fix complaint came in.
So I actually had two parts to that. One, the C Click Fix complaint, but also I was curious if this was, I heard, I don't remember where I heard this, but I heard it was something that was seen prior as being built, but no action was taken because there was no complaint. Is that correct?
That's incorrect. Mr. Mayor and members of council, Pete Picardo, thank you for having me here. We originally got the complaint when it came through C Click, and so that was an official complaint. And so based on that, we have to go out and investigate. But we did not witness it being built, you know, we didn't drive by, it's half-built. We would always make contact if we saw that to try to stop the progress so that it wasn't complete, therefore lending more work to be removed.
Okay. That's all I had for that one. I just wanted to know that. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? We do have some requests to speak. Pam, do you have any further before we bring those folks up?
No.
So your first speaker is Brian Aola, who will be followed by, looks like David Lasik?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council members, for hearing me tonight. I'm not trying to be a pain in anyone's side. I know and I fully respect our city and its laws and its governance. And I just want to give a plug to Pam and her team. They've been phenomenal working with us. So we have absolutely no gripes with the city whatsoever. My family and I, we moved here in 2010 from Fair Oaks, and we just immediately realized that Folsom was an amazing city, where it obviously had really strong leadership for whatever city council was sitting at the time, whatever city manager was occupying the seat at the time, whatever director was occupying the city development department. It was clear that a lot of thought and consideration was put into everything that the city of Folsom does. And so we immediately appreciated living here. I mean, we ride our bikes everywhere, so a lot of thought in the bike trails. We look around, we love what's going on with the Johnny Cash Trail. We use that often and always. And so one of the things that hit me when we were looking at, we were just having to start this discussion with the city, was that, you know, our motto. Our motto is distinctive by nature. And I love that. I think it speaks volumes to what we do here in Folsom, from being cutting-edge and being recognized in other parts of the world for a trail to a very famous and great musician, or whether it's creating the first-ever treehouse ordinance that goes to our city for the governance treehouses only. We live in Lexington Hills, and our Lexington Hills, and North Lexington to be exact, and our treehouse clearly backs up to Oak Avenue Parkway. Most of you have probably seen it, not just in pictures, you've probably driven by after some discussion I'm sure has started, and seen it from somewhere. In January this year, I embarked on a mission to take down our old two-story treehouse that was in the same exact tree since 2010. The tree canopy did a much better job of covering it at that time, so that's why I don't think it was ever an issue. But what had happened is the tree had started growing to a place where it was either the tree or the treehouse. And I love my trees, and so we took that down immediately. And to my surprise, my kids were not finished with the treehouse. And so I started the process of looking on the city website, did not, I failed to call the city. After looking on the city website, I didn't think I had to. I researched the height requirements, the maximum height requirement for any structure for the, for at least any structure, maximum height is 30 feet in the city of Folsom without special variance or special request. I did see the accessory structure page, but I immediately went down to the definition and saw that it was for sheds, casitas, playhouses, and decks, I think, by the definition. It didn't say, "And others," or "And the like," or anything like that. And so a little pushback from the city was that it was a playhouse. And my pushback, playfully but seriously, is that if you type the word "playhouse" into Google and you go to the images page, you will not see a treehouse in the picture. And there's a reason for that, because treehouses are in trees. One of the things that treehouses do, that a lot of things don't do nowadays, video games, television, is they spark creativity. My kids hold school sessions for the neighborhood kids in our treehouse. They have an easel, and they have school there all the time. I mean, they're creating projects, they're going over math and homework and all the like. And so it gets my kids out of the house. I mean, sure, we have an Xbox, we have a Wii, but they'd rather go outside and play on our treehouse. It's not just a place for our children, but it is a place for the neighborhood children. All of my neighbors are totally fine with my treehouse. My back neighbor is the dog park. So concerning fire, with respect to the fire chief, there's absolutely no structure behind my house. There's grass and six lanes of highway before it would touch anything. So again, you know, I've heard that there, I watched Pam's illustration there, and I did a search myself, there are no, well, that I could find, no treehouse ordinances in any city in the U.S. that I could find on the internet with quite a bit of searching. I propose to the city, and I request of the city, that we be the first city to be, again, distinctive by nature and adopt a treehouse ordinance, in which I would gladly volunteer to sit upon a panel of residents who are like-minded and would like to see something family-friendly, that furthers our family-friendly definition of our city and the distinctive by nature motto that we so proudly display everywhere, to include our trash trucks. But I want to be a place where we can be unique, continue to be unique, that we can create safe, fun, classy, well-designed treehouses with a process that we can govern, so that we don't find ourselves here again with another family that doesn't have the last name Asola, and can give them very clear requirements when they do a Google search or a Word search on, or search through the documents on our site to find any city code.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, Roger.
I'll just reiterate. First of all, what I wanted to say was I appreciate your stance and your willingness to work with staff, and I also appreciate staff's eagerness to help you out. They were lickety-split, right on the dot, ready to investigate and not just tear it down, but look at some options. So I just wanted to, I appreciate your family's position on that and our staff's position on that. And I'll leave it at that, and we can open up for discussion. But I just wanted to make sure you were acknowledged for your mentality and attitude towards it.
Appreciate that. And again, I can't stress enough how pleasant the Folsom staff has been. They've been great and very professional, easy to work with.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Next. Next speaker is David Lasik, who will be followed by Chris Tarzy.
Well, thank you. I've lived in Folsom now for 30 years, come December. Moved up here from San Diego. And I do wish to thank each of you and some of your predecessors. You have done an outstanding job in making Folsom a beautiful city. And it's not a large city like San Diego, or some of the other places in Southern California where I used to reside. What does make it distinct in my mind is the creativity that some of you applied to the problems that we faced, whether it be now the Johnny Cash Trail, a signature mark for our city, or whether it is some of the other development of park projects that I know Mr. Sheldon was involved in back when he was a park commissioner, the last time I spoke before this assembly. I'm a neighbor of Brian, lived on and in the cul-de-sac, and been there for 30 years. Driving up Oak Avenue Parkway, you really do have to kind of pay a lot of attention to see the structure. Now, Brian mentioned, and it's true, this thing backs up to sidewalk and open walkway with trees. The structure is built and integrates the tree. It would not be a simple task to take it down. Now, my old career before I retired, I spent my time as a vehicle maintenance manager. It was a lot of hands-on. And I know it would not be a simple task to remove this thing. It was well-built. On the other side of this, some of the things you provided with the city, and thankfully so, has to do with enjoyment, not just for people my age, younger, but for children. And I'm still not quite too far gone to not remember trips to Disneyland, for example, and being able to reach the bottom of that sign and say, "You've got to be this height to go on this ride." And when I see this structure, it reminds me of those days. It's whimsical, it's fanciful. It brings enjoyment to all of these kids, not just on this cul-de-sac, but to the friends that Brian's family knows through school and other things, church. I would hate to see that we could not find a way for a variance or some other process to enable this structure to still exist as it is. I can't believe, how will he design this thing, and how it looks? It's a testament. And so it's, it is an asset to my cul-de-sac. It's an asset to this city, I believe. And I think it would be detrimental to remove it. It does back up to a cinder block wall. So there's really not much of a fire problem when I see. I mean, we just had a fire behind our house.
Can you go ahead and wrap up the comments for me?
You bet. I would like to see, perhaps, you guys try to figure out a way to find some resolution. I know, Mr. Mayor, you talked earlier about with Mr. Goss, who was a great asset to the city, that you find some way to be able to find a resolution. A height, a treehouse is not a treehouse unless it's tall. And as far as privacy, you know, we live in a two-story home environment. I mean, everyone can see into my backyard, and I can see into everyone else's. So that's really not a valid factor. And it's not an accessory building as such. I have a shed, other people do. It doesn't really pertain. So I would hope and ask for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Chris Tarzy, who was followed by Peggy Dewey.
Good evening. So yes, my name is Chris Tarzy, and I just have a quick story and kind of a comment to consider. My story, I do real estate in Folsom, and I had some clients that I was showing houses to. And when we were driving around, they saw the treehouse. And kind of the comments from the car were how cool it was. And I think it was the father that said it, or maybe it was one of the kids, but they were like, "I totally want to live in a place like that," something along those lines. "I want to live in that kind of community." And so I just thought that that was kind of cool, you know, to, you know, to be a part of that, to have them see that, and have that treehouse kind of be a draw to live and to want to purchase a house in Folsom. And then the other comment that I have for your consideration is just, in real estate, we're reminded all the time about what a great community Folsom is to live. And it's always voted, you know, in the top communities to raise a family. And I believe, or at least my opinion is, that it's reasons like the treehouse, or the skate parks, or the bike trails and things like that, is what makes Folsom always on that list and make it one of the top on the list. So with that, that's all I have to say, and I just want to thank you for letting me share.
Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Your final speaker is Peggy Dewey.
Hi there. I wrote mine down so I wouldn't go on and on.
That's quite all right.
Okay. I came here tonight to represent the Asola family. We've lived across the street from them in our present house in Lexington Hills for 24 years. And in time we've lived here, we've watched the city grow and change, and we've marveled at the variety of amenities that are available. Just what you've been talking about tonight, it was just the perfect night to hear about all these wonderful things that have gone on and to see the people that have been involved in it. And my husband and I, many times- on and to see the people that have been involved in it. And my husband and I many times even lately have said that the people that have done this are you, the city council. We are amazed at the ability of the city council of this city. And it is a reason that we want to remain here even though our children are grown. So when I heard that the Isolas' treehouse was to be torn down, that it was ordered by the city for it to be torn down, I was appalled. One complaint, one complaint compared to all of the people that enjoy this treehouse and for what it represents. You have to admit, it is a pretty cool treehouse. The neighbors aren't complaining. The structure is sound. I was playing in it today. I climbed up in it just to say I did. It's not bothering anyone. In fact, it's, it's very appealing to everyone. When the treehouse was built, there were no ordinances or guidelines, which we've made clear tonight. And that is the point that I'm trying to make. What I'd like to propose is, since there are no ordinances, that we grandfather this treehouse in because it is very unique. And I would like to see the city put forth a treehouse ordinance. I know it's different, but I think it's something that needs to be done. And as Brian offered, it was the first thing I thought of is I'd like to offer two to be on such a committee if such a thing were to exist. Anyway, I just wanted to come forth and support them because this matters a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, you want to come up to speak? Please bring your blue card with you at the same time so we have it for the record. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Please fill a blue card and bring it forward so I can know how many more I have before I shut the hearing down.
Hi, I'm Natalie Turner. I just agree with everything that's been said here tonight. Just wanted to add a couple more things. Roger, when you asked them, was it a question or a complaint? I think that nails it on the head. They're asking for the information. This is a treehouse. We can't find any of the information. It could have very well been somebody who was not irritated at all that wanted to know for the sake of, they've inspired me to build my own treehouse. What do I need to do to go about this? I know personally that they've asked all of their neighbors. They asked the neighbor that it had joined with, is this anything that would bother you before they went into any of the building situation? Also, Brian has experienced building. It's not that he hasn't ever built anything before. He's currently doing an addition in his house, which he's working, I'm sure, with getting all of the permits. I know that they're going through the entire process. So it's not something where he is just starting to build something and kids are going to fall through it. I have four children, and we are in this community quite often. And we know, just because I have so many young children, just the pulse of the community is saying, we support the Isolas and we want, we want things like this treehouse to be a part of our community. People were shocked that this was going to be something that they were going to have to tear down, especially since probably at this point, I'm guessing hundreds and hundreds of kids have played in the same treehouse. They're a family that invites everybody in and welcomes people over. And it's a strong place in the community for people to gather. And I know that that's something that's important to Folsom, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll go into council deliberation. Who wants to start? Roger?
So I think there's a lot of mitigating factors on this one. And I think at the end of the day, I have seen the structure. I've driven by it when it went up. And to me, it didn't ring any bells as far as being something crazy. I actually, you know, after this, this hits kind of the social media sphere and all the, all the attention was drawn on it. I Googled myself on treehouses in Folsom, and you're right, I don't see anything on treehouses. And I have a guilty pleasure of actually looking at really weird places to stay on like Airbnb and all these other things. And there are a lot of things coming up with kind of the new age generations with, with different things that folks build and rent out. Not that this would be that, but having a, the family really struck me, struck a chord with me on having an ordinance on treehouses. We're distinctive by nature. I'll do anything to get my kids out of my house and let them play and get them to use their minds and bodies instead of, instead of playing on Xboxes and PlayStations. And I really like that, that, that push to do that and that willingness to change the policy, you know. And I feel like that would go hand in hand with some sort of variance for this treehouse. It was hard to tell when I saw it, you know, what it was at first. It looked like, you know, kind of just a structure, really well-built structure. I mean, like just well-done. And seeing the detailed pictures of it being in the tree, I don't know if, I guess my question would be, what would be, if there was some sort of variance, what would, what compliance would need to happen for the structure to make it to where it would be something we could grant a variance on? And is there room for, and I'm going to direct this to you, is there room for us to take the initiative to adopt a treehouse policy and require standards going forward so that, you know, when, when folks want to venture out and they search treehouse in Folsom, they can, they can tell just like they would. And the other part of that is, you know, he's building an addition to his family, to his house, and he has taken the required steps. So it's not like he's trying to circumvent the policies in general. This one just isn't a policy. So I guess it's a two-part question. A, what changes would need to be made to the structure in your opinion? And B, how do we go about actually establishing that? And can this be a variance granted to this building or structure, whatever you call it, treehouse? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, a part of the challenge in answering your question is, we would need to have our building official evaluate the structure to determine what, what part of the building code would have to be met in order for it to comply with the building code, right, at a minimum. So the variance is a vehicle for someone to request exceptions for unusual circumstances that apply to the, the property, the land that doesn't apply to other property of a similar nature. So again, you know, the neighboring property. I think in this case, it, they don't have unusual circumstances that are obvious.
Well, the obvious one to me is that it is a treehouse and not an auxiliary structure.
No, they have to establish a hardship is what she's trying to say.
This, the cities-
I guess it's like a mitigating factor, isn't the hardship. Like, it's kind of like a blurred line, like a fine line, like why it's different, you know?
Well, a treehouse is one of the, one of the types of accessory structures. So it does fall into the category and would have to meet the code requirements for all accessory structures, which currently would require it to be five feet setback from the side and rear yard property lines and a maximum of 15 feet. So currently, it's, it's not five feet setback from side or rear yard property lines, and it's 21 feet tall. So, so the variance would be to vary from the, the standards and setbacks of the zoning code, but there, we are not allowed to vary from the health and safety issues associated with the building and fire code. And so without having more information to look at, we wouldn't be able to give you that answer about how they would need to modify it because we would need to better understand the, the structural issues and talk about the details. For example, we talked about combustibility of a structure, right? And there's a fire rating, like in some cases, you can increase the fire rating of a wall in order to make it more non-combustible. But if it has an opening on that wall, like a window or a door, then it changes that rating and the distance requirement. So without getting into a lot of details, we wouldn't be able to tell you tonight what, what health and safety issues associated with building and fire code would have to be met as, as a minimum.
So I guess.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, if I may clarify the various issue for the council, because I'm not hearing what, what, what you are trying to accomplish, allow me to explain. A variance is usually a tool for a property owner to request in the event that the property itself has, has some unusual condition that prevents the property owner from using the property in the same manner as his or her neighbors. So like in, in the example that, that Director Jones provided you earlier, even there was a heritage oak tree, a protected tree on that property and, and only that property, that owner could come to the city and request a variance so that he or she could use his or her property in the same manner as his or her neighbors.
So I'll give you my ask and I'll, and it's okay if it's not an answer tonight because if there's modi diligence due, then I'm totally fine with that. My ask is that we set, we don't set precedents, but we, we find a way to keep the structure, but also set policy that includes treehouse. Because I don't think FM 1702 actually mentions treehouse as an auxiliary structure.
It doesn't mention that particular, but it doesn't mention any or all. I mean, there's, there's a couple of places where we call out exceptions, but again, it's intended to be broad for, for specific reasons, right?
I've had some like occupancy commercial buildings that have, don't have one-hour fire rating walls. And this thing is like next to a street, no houses around it, and on a retaining wall. So I guess that my ask is that we find a way to do that. If that's, I don't know if that's an answer we can answer tonight. You said we can't. There's modi diligence as far as what would be required to meet that. So just sitting up here, my, my two cents is I'd like to explore those options and figure that out, but I'll let others speak.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, members of the city council, this agenda item is asking the council to give direction to staff, not necessarily with a particular focus on this particular situation, because the policy decision, should the council wish to explore some other way and change the zoning code, the, the application of the, the new code, the new section of the zoning code would be applicable citywide, not necessarily just for this particular situation.
Right.
This is not an agenda item asking appeal to the city council. It is to give council direction as to, does the council wish to instruct staff to explore some special exemption as Pam presented to the council? Or does the council wish to stick and maintain what's already been provided in the zoning code and, and-
Okay.
And that's where staff is.
Let me re-ask that. I'm looking for a special exemption on this one. If every house in Folsom decided to build this type of structure, I would be pleased. It's amazing.
And that would be a policy call for the council to make. Does the council wish to see similarly constructed situated structure citywide? Because once you allow one, you have to allow for all. The city has to be open, objective, and fair to all citizens.
So that's, that's the request from Roger. So I don't, I don't want the rest of us just to start debating his thing. I want each of us to put out our own ideas and direction to staff, if any. So let's not get zoned into just one, one member's wants and wishes that we concentrate on. Let's talk about it.
Don't use the word zone.
That's a good one, huh? Ernie?
I came here with a preconceived idea to say, the hell no. Okay, I'm changing my mind. And what I wanted to go on, I'm changing my mind, is I want to defer that this gentleman made a decision. He looked and he didn't find one, and then he made a decision. I would think that his neighbor next door, if was so inclined to make the same decision, would probably done the same thing, only because of, of not the way he did it. Okay? I think the way he did it would be, a lot of people would do it the same way. So in order to stop that, we have to be more clearly, I think, in the definition of a treehouse. When I saw in the social media, we're going to tear down the kids' treehouse, oh my God, the big bad city doing this. Well, it's different than that. Okay? It's really not that. We're not trying to throw the kids out of the treehouse. But I think the guidance that I would like to, to, to give, number one, I don't want precedent set by whatever decision we make on this particular treehouse. And I would defer on the, the guidance that we would give is to go back with the professionals, our staff, okay, your code people and your engineers and all that, to go back and review everything on that treehouse as to the safety aspect of the tree. Because I'm, I'm more concerned, not only with the kids having fun, but are they safely having fun? Okay? And of the neighborhood kids and everybody else. So I would want, I would want to be, to go over with a fine-tooth comb, so to speak, to be sure that any safety hazard is mitigated. Okay? If you need railings, if you need whatever, that we do it, but not with the intent of opening Pandora's box that everybody in town would make big treehouses. To me, this, it's bigger than a treehouse that I ever would have thought of, okay? But that's, again, we, everybody in this town's unique in some area. But my guidance from, from one individual here would be, I'm not interested in ripping it down, but I'm certainly interested in making it as safe as we can to be sure that, not that mom and dad would not have that as a, as a goal anyways, you know. I'm not saying they're letting the kids be in hazard. But when we're talking about precedence for other parents, other houses, I think we have to be sure that whatever we do is, is sound and, and safety-wise. But I don't want it to become a, now, whether you can do this, what I'm describing, I don't, no, that's up to the professionals. But my guidance would be, I don't want to tear the tree down, okay? But I want to be sure, for example, if, if I told him, don't use my wall for a thing, if he had to unhatch the wall, what's the safety aspect of doing that? Would he have to do something else in order to assure the solid structure? That, that's engineers' talk. And that's what you guys would be doing to be sure that, you know, because we don't want to make a precedent that anybody can find into our walls around the town and use them without permission. But at the same time, I, I've got to be sure the structure won't fall down. And that's what engineers do. They know how to, how to figure that out.
If I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, all very good points. My concern, however, is when you direct staff or provide guidance to staff to do, just as you described, one, city Folsom, and there's, there's no government in the whole state that I'm aware of who is in the position to guarantee safety of any structure that they didn't put up. This is a structure that city did not put up. And we, assuming that's what I'm, assuming I'm hearing you correctly, you're giving guidance to staff so that staff will hopefully help review if there's any safety concerns, any building code deficiencies that can, that the city can identify and help rectify. That is traditionally not the city's rule. I'm sorry.
Let me be a devil's advocate on that point. We check construction that people do all the time. That your code people do it all the time to be sure.
You are absolutely correct, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Now, whether we can check it now at the state of, of construction and still have the same feeling of, of safety, I probably would debate that with you. I don't know.
It's no, no debating with you, Mr. Vice Mayor. My point is, the city is not in a, a position, unless you want the city to be in a position to guarantee the safety of some structure that was built before. We can do that. We have identified deficiencies in improperly unlawfully constructed buildings before. But that's from a position of code enforcement, not a, not in a position of, of compliance. And the second point is, once you allow or instruct city staff to do, perform this type of tasks for this particular situation, city will have to do the same for every other situation similarly situated because we have to be fair to everybody.
There would be a standard set.
So that would be, that would, that would be established as a precedence.
Steve?
I, well, I'll defer and let you hear more. I don't agree, but I'm not a lawyer. I'm just an ABC show that, that has an impact on what kids happen to be, we should do for our kids.
I hear you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
But I also want them safe. I don't want them falling off of some kind of, you know, landing or that. I don't want none of that. I don't want neighborhood kids to come over and be at risk.
Very candidly, just by looking at the pictures that Pam was able to present to the council tonight, I have, I am seeing a number of different safety concerns.
But can we make them right?
That's, that's only superficial that I can say. I don't know about the calculation. I don't know about engineering load. I don't know about the construction or even the integrity of the tree. All, all those are factors in, in our consideration. But like I said, this is not agendas for this particular situation.
Yeah, but if we give you guidance that, not that mine's going to overheat all the rest of the guys and gal. All I'm saying is, can we give you guidance from one person anyways, in a way to see everybody gets done, to say, take a look at that? I don't want to discard that. If you, if the engineers are capable and we have one on this, on this concept.
She was trying to talk, actually. I think, I think my comments might help.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I think, Ernie, what you're asking Steve and Pam is that we have engineers on staff.
Right.
We look at construction documents all the time. We do construction inspection. What we, what we, the city of Folsom do is John Q. Home Builder comes in, Mr. Treehouse comes to town, they have to prepare a set of drawings. They have to prepare a set of drawings. Those set of, that set of drawings then has to be stamped by either a civil engineer or an architect. And typically the architect employs an engineer to do those structural calculations. The City of Folsom does not do design work. What they do is they take that set of plans, they review them and say, yes, this looks like it's going to work. The City of Folsom does not ever take responsibility for the structural capacity of whatever that structure is. The person who's engineering stamp is the person that's responsible. So if something, if, if it's built in accordance with that set of plans and the city has the set of plans, they generally spot check construction just to make sure that, you know, I don't know, I'll look at the subdivision in Lexington Hills 35 years ago that was missing those structural support beams. City had gotten, ended up getting pulled into that lawsuit. So to suggest that our staff is going to go out there and look at, look at the treehouse and say, yes or no, it's structurally sound, I will step in front of a train to make sure that our staff is never in that situation. The City of Folsom could not be liable if, for, God forbid, if something were to happen to one of the kids that was in there.
Let me ask a question. Has anybody asked a question to the homeowner? Did they just imagine?
Well, I, I read what was in the paper.
Everybody stop for a second. We're getting too much into a non-agenda's item, it's not asking questions about a specific project. That's not what we're allowed to do. It's not agendized that way. We need to talk to the agendized item, which is give direction to the staff about. So we can't get into a, a he says, he said, or ask questions about a structural. That's, that could be an agendized item if need be, but to me, we just got to stay focused because we've, we've stepped outside of the boundaries of the Brown Act. So we, we got to reel it back in.
Steve, can I just finish my, okay, so where I'm coming from is I don't, I don't want the city in this case or any other case to be acting as the engineer. If, if, if council decides to move forward with a treehouse ordinance, which honestly I wouldn't recommend, because my position on this is going to be, if it's anything other than a pre-manufactured shed or playhouse or whatever it is, where it's got a UL rating and it's, it, you know, it's, it's being done in accordance with, with building, building codes, anything else to me has to, has to show up in, in the, inside this building with an engineer stamp or, or an architect stamp. And to be honest, in the case of a treehouse, I also want the arborist report to know that that tree is healthy and that the tree can withstand whatever loads are going to be imposed by the treehouse. And that's all going to be on whoever it is that wants to build the treehouse or, you know, treehouses are us or whoever that might be. And I have a feeling that that, getting into that kind of a situation because of the cost that it's going to add is going to be a whole nother ballgame. And I'm not surprised frankly, that, that they weren't able to identify treehouses in any, a treehouse ordinances in any other jurisdiction. Interesting concept, but it's one of those things where more often than not, you're going to see them in more rural environments. And it's going to be, you know, maybe not, maybe not the dad building it. And there's probably more than a, more than a few kids that have fallen out of treehouses that they built with their friends. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I do not want to see the city take on the liability. And I think the cost involved in doing what, what I feel as an engineer is required to do that is going to make it cost prohibitive for the average person to own it.
That would be up to them though. That would be, we shouldn't judge their financial.
Let's just keep it to give a direction.
My, my point, Ernie, was that I don't know that I want us, our staff to spend a whole boatload of time to put together an ordinance for treehouses if this is going to be the only one that we ever have an issue with.
So if I, if I can, the, the, this is obviously the agendized item, but the agendized item invokes the address and the family of the specific project. So two things here. One, we need to address the agendized item, but also I'm simply asking for a cursory glance to ensure that while we decide what the heck we're going to do with this thing, and they're taxpayers. I mean, I'll, I'll invest the time from the city. I'll vote for that to have us look at that and, and grant some sort of treehouse, whatever, at council discretion, but that is part of the discussion here because I don't want them tearing it down because code is.
That wasn't what I said, Roger. What I said was I wouldn't be in support of, I wouldn't be in support of spending a lot of time drafting a treehouse ordinance. That's all I'm saying.
Staff report was to said this particular structure brought this thing forward and we agenda as a workshop format, not as a decision format. That's why I'm saying where we're, we're stepping over the line a little bit. So I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's what prompted this forward and that they actually, they can't appeal this item to us. So that's why we brought it as a workshop format so we could have an open discussion about our building code. But we had to, but we were courtesy enough to identify their address as the catalyst to bring this forward. That's the only reason. So it was not agendized, even though the address is there, it's not agendized for us to make a, a decision.
Is it out of the realm for us to ask for staff to do a cursory glance on the, on the structure itself to?
I think it's out of line because as Carrie just mentioned, this is a responsibility of the homeowner to bring structural engineering plans with either stamp from the engineer or stamp from the architect. You're asking our people to go out and look at something that, that now we're going to take liability for an engineer of our city staff to go out to a structure and try to figure out whether it's going to be structurally sound.
So then it, I mean, it's not listed in the code. So what I'm saying is if we.
It is. That's, that's the argument. Our staff believes that treehouse is an accessory structure.
Believing it and listing it are two different things.
Okay. Andy, you want to add?
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's always interesting to me that, you know, some of the hardest things for us to do up here are, are this, you know? It's, you know, things we want to do that we get painted into a corner and we can approve a development of 500 houses, but, and that'll take an hour of deliberation. But then we get to something that we, we all are sympathetic to and just trying to figure out the best way to proceed forward. So I just have a few thoughts written down, you know, and this is just me, you know, as far as a treehouse ordinance. I guarantee you this place would be packed if we were going to start to consider allowing 20 foot, 21 foot high structures and things like that. You know, it was mentioned by I think David, you know, there's, you know, there's a two-story home. So, you know, is there a problem with allowing higher height on these accessory structures? And I assure you there is. I mean, we had on Derrington Way, probably five years ago, we had somebody that wanted to put an exterior staircase on their two-story home and the, the neighbors were concerned about privacy. So I assure you that if, if our tact here was to develop a treehouse ordinance and we were going to consider height above 15 feet, there would be a lot of opposition. Truly, truly there would be. Same with the side yard setbacks. You know, and, and again, this is a little unique. That's why this is difficult because of the location of, of this backyard. So, you know, and again, I'm, you know, sympathetic to that, but, but I, I just want people to understand I've been up here long enough to know that, you know, a treehouse ordinance that is going to allow higher structures closer to fence lines not only would be politically difficult, but we get into the fire safety codes that were brought up as well. So there's a whole nother issue there that are lines that I wouldn't be interested in crossing. So not at all interested in that, but that gets back to this specific issue. And I built something like this once. It lasted about five years and then I tore it down. I'm, I was trying to remember how high it was. It wasn't 21 feet. I don't think it was 15, but it was built next to an existing swing set structure and it was fun to do. The neighborhood kids loved it and, and, and it's a cool thing. And, and, and I, I understand where, you know, everybody comes from on this as far as, you know, reading about this issue. And again, being sympathetic to, you know, all the hard work that went into this. The, the other thing related to a treehouse ordinance is, I assure you, there would be so many of these things built to not near the quality that that one is built, you know? So again, an issue for neighbors that would come up. So, so that gets us back to, you know, the question. And I would, I would certainly entertain, you know, I, I suppose my, my ask would be is, is that, you know, again, staff and the, the homeowners is, is just getting together and try and find a, a solution that works that, you know, fits inside. And if changes have to be made, that we get painted into a corner and, and just, you know, based on precedents that would be set that we do not want to set. And I assure you, we don't want to set precedence of 21-foot-high accessory structures. When you get into the, the treehouse thing, you know, it's a nomenclature argument. You know, what are you reading and seeing and what fits into a category? And it's too bad it, you know, wasn't clear in this instance. But it, it doesn't resolve the issue. And again, you know, what I look at is, is, you know, some of the rationale for the, you know, basic California building codes is you get into health and safety. So I, I, I guess, you know, I, I just don't have an answer. I would love to see something work that satisfies everyone, but I, I just got to believe some, some changes will, will have to be made for some important reasons based on what I've heard. But, you know, I'm, I'm at the disposal of city staff, the homeowners as far as ideas, you know, kind of moving down the road. I appreciate the mayor for teeing this up because these are the, these are the hardest things to go, okay, we know. We're going to get some, you know, some interesting commentary, but this is worthy of our time. You know, this almost falls into that good problem to have category where, you know, you had some, some, some really great intent on something that, that, you know, just went above and beyond things that fit inside the city code. So, so I don't have anything specific, but gosh, you know, we need to try and do something. But I know I'm hearing that options might be a little bit limited. So I'll, I'll leave it.
The only other thing that I'll add to that is that I, I don't want the city to assume any liability for this. So if that means that part of the ongoing discussion has to do with getting some license, some P E that is not an employee of the City of Folsom, to go out there and look and see what's actually been built and make a determination as to structural adequacy of whatever this treehouse is, you know? Could be, you know, the best weekend carpenter in the world, but we don't know that. And I want somebody else, somebody else on the hook for this. I don't want, even, even if you find a way to get around this, I don't want the city on the hook if that, if that thing comes away from that sound wall that was not meant to be a structural wall. That was meant to mitigate sound. So I'm also a little bit concerned about that. That and, and the tree as well.
So and lastly, just thanks all of you for taking the time to come out.
So if I may, Councilmember Howell, I, I'm still struggling to, to gather the council's direction to staff as to whether the council has any desire to entertain some zoning code amendment to allow a form of accessory structure, however you wish to define that, to intrude into the five feet, five-foot setback area?
For, my personal feeling is based on what Pam has said, what the fire chief has said, I'm, I don't know that I'm interested in doing that, you know? I, I think that, I don't see us changing this. If we're, if there, if there's going to be an ongoing discussion, then I think the discussion has to be some sort of an issue related to the variance. I'm not interested in opening that door to have, you know, as Andy said, you know, I, I see the room full of people who don't want treehouses. I live at the top of a cul-de-sac. I have five lots that back up to mine and it's full of oak trees. And I would not be happy, nor would any of my neighbors be happy to find out that there was, you know, seven treehouses and, you know, that we could all see.
In this aspect, the neighbors are perfectly fine. The neighbors are the ones who reached out to us and they are all fighting to keep this tree.
It's opening a door though. That's the problem.
That's why I'm asking. So is there a realm to which, and, and we can, I don't want to spend too much time outside of what we need to, but I'm of the mindset of, and I respect your comments, but of, of amending and looking at, so minus the issues we have, if, if you consider it an auxiliary unit, you minus the, the, and, and I, we haven't even heard from the fire chief. So I didn't see anything in this impact that there was anything fire related besides.
There's a meeting amongst city staff and the fire chief was there and I got a summary of it earlier today.
So we should all have that summary. I don't know if that's possible, but.
Pam summarized it tonight, basically.
Could I just ask the fire chief to, to come on up and comment on this? Because I think that's important.
The last part of that, what I'm saying is. I'm going to stop this again. We're not here debating the action of this treehouse. And so with all due respect, chief, hold tight for a second. Because again, the item that's agendized, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, because again, I'm hearing going outside the realm.
My question, so with the item that's agenda.
With all due respect, the fire chief is not going to come down and talk about this specific item because it's not agenda.
Our city manager.
Okay.
So I asked if we can, if we can proceed with the agenda item and amending the, the policy, but also within this specific case, we treat it as an auxiliary structure minus the deficiencies that we've noted per listed auxiliary structures and look at the safety component based upon auxiliary or accessory structures and exempt this piece so that we can move forward on, on what we consider a treehouse, not a treehouse. So semantics play here, but it actually does play here. And that's not a, I'm sorry to use play.
We're giving direction to a specific issue.
On the item.
We're giving direction to a, a, a non-agendized item. What, what we're trying to do is gather changes or suggestions or direction to staff about changing or amending the zoning code.
So I'm asking to amend the zoning code, but.
For this particular thing?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe, what, I could be wrong, so please allow me to paraphrase what I'm hearing out here. I believe Councilmember Galloway is seeking a citywide zoning code amendment that would apply citywide in situations, not necessarily this one, but situations similarly situated everywhere. So in the event that somebody wishes to build a treehouse or a he said, she said, I, I, I don't know. It's, you know, the, the definition can just be a mile long. That's why the definition is very broad for that, that purpose to capture all similarly situated structures accessory to the main building. So if I'm hearing Councilmember Galloway's comment correctly, he's asking for a code amendment that would apply citywide. And if that's the case, then we would have to deal with maybe a different setback requirement, different height requirement, maybe a different standards to evaluate those type of structures should the council be willing to entertain that. And hence the fire chief maybe, his, his knowledge and expertise may be valuable in assisting the council in making that kind of policy direction.
And I'm not asking that.
Appropriate time.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm not asking that, that be the decision we make tonight. I'm asking for more time for us to decide that decision. So there's more variables at play with it, but I do think it's important that we look at that and I think it's, it's relevant.
And, and I'm not interested in amending the zoning code.
Do you have anything to add before I jump in?
Yeah, I, I think maybe you misunderstood what I was saying. I am not interested. I, I would be interested in a, a standard of treehouse, okay? But not modeled after their treehouse because I think it's too big, okay? But I think somewhere in there, there is a, there is a proper thing, what I would consider a safe and reasonable treehouse, okay? But I'm not saying change the amendment of what we have to, to, to make it. I'd rather make it, if we can legally do this, make an exception, a variance to, without setting the precedent. Now, whether you can or cannot do that, but that's where I'm coming from. Make it a variance without an exception. And then establish a.
No, but, but Ernie, a variance is an exception. I think we're kind of on the same page.
Well, no, I, I mean, I mean, well, I mean, all, all the way around for the city. When I say exception, that now we're changing.
Yeah, which, which is where I started, you know? I'd rather have them can try to figure out a way to do a variance on this, but I'm not interested in changing the zoning code. Not interested in a treehouse ordinance, not interested in seeing, you know, this opening opened up to everyone in the city.
Well, you, except I would like to see a treehouse ordinance that specifically talks about a treehouse, okay?
Well, let me jump in. I might be able to kind of, some thoughts as I'm hearing everybody talk here. Number one, in my opinion, and I've had to deal with the state building codes since the seventies as I was in the fire department. Because like, like the City of Folsom, Burbank adopted the state fire code, building code, electrical code, plumbing code, et cetera. So to make it clear for everybody out there, if, and which is what the City of Folsom done, we have adopted all the state codes. The only time you can change a state code is you make it more strict. You can't make it less lenient. So that really pays a, a big variance on this discussion this evening. So, you know, when I look at that, I'm going, wait a minute. You know, accessory structures is defined up and down the state of California. And no disrespect intended to the gentleman here, because I think it's from the outside, it looks pretty cool. For the kids, I'm sure they're having a ball. But what really bothered me, and we're having a zoning code discussion, is the fact I've heard more than once, you're an experienced builder. You didn't call the city because you couldn't find a definition. The definition of accessory structures is pretty clear. So my, my comment to, if we're going to make any changes maybe to the definition would be accessory structures such as, name a few, and if it comes to treehouse, maybe put asterisk and say additional requirements may be required, you know, things like that. But I'm not interested in defining he says, she says, man caves, treehouses, party house, you name it. That's just not going to. Um, that's just not gonna work for me. As far as the setback variances, no. I, I can't go with that one because of fact, I was a fireman. And fire doesn't always just go one direction out towards the street, it can go any direction, it can go up into trees and everything. And the last thing I would ever want to happen is it's, it's, it's in such a way where we've allowed something to catastrophically possibly have destruction to not only a treehouse, but your family. Uh, and whether it be your family or anybody else in the city. So I'm not comfortable amending the zoning code to change the setback lines, I'm not amending the zoning code for the fire safety issue of anything, and I'm, I'm hoping the chief will agree with me on that one. I'm certainly not looking for a way to find a, an exception to allow somebody to bolt any structure, whether it be theirs or anybody else, to city's taxpayer's property. Uh, that itself is unconscionable that, especially from an experienced individual, that would occur. Uh, and I'm not, um, I might, however, consider in our zoning code amendment, if so desired by this council, I know we have an eight-foot setback from the very end of what the residential structure is before an accessory structure, it's gotta be an eight-foot thing. I'd be willing to go to six, because I've seen people that have a little more compressed yard, and this gentleman, as I think I heard was gonna possibly do a room addition or some kind of addition to his home, you know, maybe he's challenged because he's got a pool or other structures or other play areas in there, so he might be challenged, maybe that one, I don't know what his thinking, it doesn't matter. But I would be more immune to say, let's go down to six instead of eight, because some of the properties around the city of Folsom, you know, th-they wanna add as many amendments as they can, by whatever circumstances they got that property, go, oh, this doesn't fit because this doesn't fit, but... So I'd be willing to look at an amendment down for a, a six-foot, um, setback from the end of a, the primary structure to an accessory structure instead of eight. And that's pretty consistent with the region saying anyways, they're three to, three to 10, so I think six is a good middle ground in, in that respect. Um, you know, I, it's, this is a hard one, because the fact that it is, it's a pretty cool treehouse. But when I looked at it several times, I walked around it from the outside, didn't trespass on your property, it, what, what bothered me, uh, it looks like it's built pretty, pretty well. Um, but what did bother me is there, and it's indicated somewhere, might've been in your presentation, there are no railings. And what really bothers me from, and this is my paramedic fireman's side speaking, and my fire inspector, I might add, did two years of that as well, is I'm concerned about whether she's up there or the kids are up there. God forbid that you do unfortunately fall out of this thing, and the others, and you're above the sound wall, you hit that berm, which is sloped towards the street and sidewalk. All I can say is that's a catastrophic event as a paramedic fireman, I'd never wanna go upon, quite frankly. So from the setback and direction to staff, I prefer to keep the, the way it is from that, as far as the, the backyard, as well as the side yards. Um, I'm willing to, like I said, go to six on that. I'm not willing to, uh, look at anything different as far as the fire codes, the building height. Uh, I think if there's gonna be an exception for coverage on property, I'm willing to look at 50% the way we have it, and maybe a notation where exceptions could be granted to a maximum 60%. Again, I look at the different inventories we have within the city, size-wise, lot-wise, et cetera, et cetera, and I think, especially with the new product coming online, for what the new, the new home buyers are, are now wanting to purchase, um, you know, maybe a little variance on the, and I'd say variance, maybe an exception, uh, for the types of properties to go to 60% overall coverage instead of 50. I think that's reasonable. Um, but I think every plan, regardless of what the structure is, does need to have that, if it's a, an elevated structure or anything deemed necessary by your department or yours, has to have some kind of PE stamp on it. Um, so, um, I think if you, as a way to work with the homeowners specifically on this one, uh, I think that at the bare minimum, it has to be detached from the sound wall, it needs to be set back for the fire code, um, but if there's a way to make all those things happen, I do not want any of our engineers signing off on anything. That set of plans and that mitigation needs to come to the city, it needs to come with a PE stamp, and quite frankly, um, I think, you know, I, I don't know where, 'cause as again, a variance has to be a hardship, there's no hardship. You build a treehouse that's not allowed in the way and manner it was built, um, but if there's some kind of exception, let's figure it out, but I don't think the exception's gonna be, in my opinion, just as one member, on the zoning code, I'm not willing to make exceptions on setback lines or fire safety or health codes.
Steve...
But I will on lot coverage, as well as the six-foot setback.
Steve, can I just add one thing to the lot coverage issue specifically? I don't know what the lot sizes are in this particular neighborhood in Lexington Hills. I'm gonna guess they're probably in the 7,500 minimum, 8,000...
About 7,500, 8,000.
'Cause I'm on the other side of Willow Creek, and mine is 17,000. So I would never, ever wanna see a 17,000 square foot lot with, with 60% covered.
Well, it goes to, I'm saying it's 50% right now, but they can go through exceptions as deemed by the department and the zoning code. You have, you have to have criteria for the exception to exceed it, just like we already have exceptions within our current municipal code for exceptions, but it has to be brought to them. If they don't like it, then they can appeal those exceptions to us.
The only, the only reason why I'm bringing this up is because the lot coverage, when my house and those houses shortly thereafter were built, was about 30%.
Mm-hmm.
One of the potential problems is you get significantly higher lot coverage on, on a large lot. You know, this would be a different situation if we were talking about a 4,000 square foot lot. But significant lot coverage of roof area means dramatically more runoff.
Oh, no, I don't disagree with that.
And that's, you know, none of the storm drains in, in that part of Lexington Hills were designed to, to take that. So I just want that kept in mind, and if, if we get into a discussion about increasing lot coverage, that's what I'm gonna be focused on.
Again, it, I'm not advocating increasing, I'm saying I did not see in the code where an exception could be granted to increase over the 50% coverage. And that, that coverage exception has to be deemed necessary and reasonable, approved from the property owner and the property by your department, as well as Dave and/or engineering and, and all that, for all the reasons you just said. I don't disagree with you. Uh, because not all the lots are 17,000.
Right.
Some lots are 4,000, where the building itself is already 50% coverage.
Yep.
Well, by their choice, they're gonna be limited to what they can do back there.
Right.
But that was their choice to build that. So I just wanna have some flexibility in that regard, because I'm trying to recognize we do have all different size of lots, anywhere from four, 3,800 square feet actually, up to half acres and 30 acres around town.
Yep.
So that's, that's what I was looking at. Do you have something else?
Sorry, I mean, essentially, are you saying you want staff to see what can be done to fix the treehouse?
No, I said, I'm, I'm not gonna variance on the setback lines or the fire health safety codes.
So regards to fire, so I'm curious on fire, I, I didn't, I, I'm not, I actually, I'm not, I'm not in the fire department, but I would like to hear what issues are with regards to fire, because there's, I don't see much there, but maybe I'm wrong. That's why I was actually interested in hearing from the chief.
But I think the question to the chief needs to be, do you want to amend the zoning code to change the fire requirements?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna amend anything based upon this specific project. I wanna, I wanna look at this project as it is, you know, sub, sub itself, and then take a peek at what we're talking about as far as policy. That's all I'm trying to get here.
No, but we can't talk about this project, Roger, that's what they keep saying. We can talk about, do we want to amend the zoning code or not? That's what we're talking about.
Will we ever talk about this project?
No, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
No, not tonight.
Oh, yeah, we could, we could...
That's what I'm asking.
Not tonight.
Can't we have more time on the specific project?
Sorry, not tonight.
Specific project, and I'll get with the city attorney to see how we're able to bring it to the agenda, 'cause again, there's some, some issues with that because of the, the way our processes work within the city.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members, members of the city council, that's a really good question. If this code enforcement action proceeds into course, this item will never come before the city council. Per our code, the code enforcement action cannot be appealed to the city council. And hence, this is being agendized, it's a policy direction to staff, whether the council wish to make any change to the current standards in the current zoning code. And we can entertain that if the, if that's the council's wish.
Exactly. Can, can we, um, you know, while we're thinking about that down the road here after the council meeting, it is, is, does the discretion exist at the council level to, um, suspend code enforcement action for a time period? Just so that we, you know, again, just buy ourselves some time, or not?
I, I believe the code enforcement officer has that discussion, and the code enforcement officer has already given a long period of time.
Right, I'm, I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
But that's, 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 that's where our hands are tied.
So what's, is there a maximum amount of time? Or is there...
Maybe a bit.
I'm just ki-, I'm not trying to like beat a dead horse here, but I just feel like it's, it's, it's a unique situation.
My recommendation, Councilmember Gaylord, is to let the code enforcement action proceed and provide direction to staff as respect to the zoning code for tonight's item.
I just don't know, at what point does government need to take its hands off of certain aspects of, of things that are happening at this point? So not, nothing against code, or our policy, or our rules, or laws, it's just, to me, I don't wanna let the process go through and waste more time on something that it's just like, let's nail it down.
If I, if I may clarify, um, any code enforcement action undertaken by a city, a municipal government has to be objective and cannot be arbitrary. We cannot favor one and, and, and not favor the other. We cannot give someone a free pass, for example, we have to treat everybody the same. The reason why there's a code enforcement action pertaining to this particular situation is, is because the situation involves violation of numerous city codes, and that's where the code enforcement action is in, initiated, implemented. Uh, it, it has been completed, we're, we're in a, we're, I, I don't know where we are in the process, I, that's why code enforcement officer is here, if you want to ask, but, um, that's why I, my recommendation is for the council to let that independent process to go through its own course, unless the council wants to make any change to the zoning code. Um, and I, I haven't heard that there may be majority of the council wants to make the change to the zoning code.
What we make to a zoning, what you're saying is, we make a, a change to the zoning code, it applies citywide, and there's nothing we can do to change the zoning code.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think there's enough time to decide that aspect on the agenda versus the, the, the issue we have at hand, is why I'm asking if there's more time that can be granted as Councilmember Moore asks.
Yeah, uh, so, if I can help on this particular, um, question, assuming that the council does wish to make any change, or some change to the zoning code, to say, for example, allow exactly how this particular treehouse is currently situated with respect to the setback, the height, and, and everything else, that will still not necessarily, um, absolve the violation that has existed prior to the code change. The situation is here because there's violation, because some structure was built in violation of the code that the council adopted.
You know, I'm, I'm not interested in, in, um, I could be, I'm not trying to compete with your legal advice, but I, I, I'm not looking to, to invalidate it, but I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to change the code, okay, to, to make that acceptable. What I'm looking to do is, can we prevent, keep the code as we have it, or make a specific one as far as treehouses, but not necessarily tear that thing down? That's what I'm asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
And, and that's my recommendation to the council, to let the code enforcement action run its course. Right now, the codes as they stand today, there are numerous violations.
But then I hear, if, if I'm interpreting what you just said, they're gonna tear it down, 'cause that's the only, that's the only way resolve the deficiencies.
That's typically, typically the case. The city's code enforcement is designed, as instructed by the council, to enforce the city's codes. You are absolutely right, Mr. Vice Mayor.
See, that's what I'm trying to not happen, is tear it down, simply because, I mean, there, there are some, I think there's more due diligence.
If I may, Councilmember Gaylord, again, I re, I sincerely recommend the council just let the code enforcement action take its course, because we cannot favor one situation or another, we have to treat everybody the same. If there's one property with a violation of code, city code in place, code enforcement has to take action once we're made aware of it. It doesn't matter who it is, where it is, as long as it's in the city and the city codes are violated. That's the mandate of the council.
Okay, can I just ask the elementary question, because it probably will make no sense to you? Is discretionary, um, options on the part of the code enforcement officer as to the injury zone?
I am, I am following your question, Mr. Vice Mayor, I do understand that the answer's no.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So why wouldn't it just, maybe I'm just asking questions now?
We're all struggling with where you wanna go, but unfortunately, the law doesn't allow us to do it.
Why would it even come this far? Why wouldn't, when I email or when someone asks, we say, there's no if, ands, or buts, give false hope to a situation that there is no hope? But I don't understand it.
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
If it's in violation of the code, and there's no, there's no, nothing we can do with the code because it's in violation of the code, why is it even a question on the agenda that we wanna amend it if that thing's gone anyway? So why wouldn't it just been, this, here's the deal?
I could, I could be wrong, but my understanding is there had been some interest from the community about treehouse, just like you have heard as well. And hence, we don't know whether the council has any interest or desire to instruct staff to do something just like what the property owners are asking you to do.
But even if they did...
And hence, we're asking the council to provide direction to staff.
But even if they did, they're still in violation of whatever tree ordinance, if, if we were to ever do a treehouse ordinance, and whether it takes 60, 90, 120 days, at the end of the day, we have multiple code violations, health and safety code violations, and, you know, we're at risk for kinda going, we're gonna suspend this action, and then, and then let's say at the end of the day, the, the zoning code amendments from whoever the council is, by the time it's ready, says X, Y, and Z, and if thing's still in violation, at the end of the day, it's still in violation, we just suspended it for 30, 60, 90, from code enforcement, doing exactly what the city council and staff has said, enforce our codes.
And the, the other option too, is that in this particular instance, they have the option to physically remove it from the wall and physically move it five feet away from the setback, and five feet away from the other side of the yard.
Lower it a bit.
And lower it, and, you know, have it on pedestal or something.
Maybe, yeah, maybe there's a way they can just re-engineer it to kinda, instead of being that direction towards the sound wall, they can come the other direction and just lower it, and then there'll be the setback lines, and then at that time, they get the proper engineer stamps that's supposed to be on it, so we have assurance.
I would do that, definitely.
And I think that is an option that was discussed with the property owners, um, Director Johns can confirm, but I believe it was discussed, removing it from the platform, getting it away from the property lines, and making sure it doesn't come within eight feet of the home, you know, so...
I know it's being called a treehouse, but looking at the photos, it's not actually in the tree. It's kinda like in the canopy of the tree.
It's, it's on a platform, so...
It's on a flat...
You take it off the platform and put it...
The point being, it's not your typical...
Yeah.
It's, it's got its own platform, it's not the treehouse that's, you know, on, you know, a bunch of boards leaning on two branches.
But I think the city attorney has made it pretty clear that there's, uh, I mean, there's not a lot, our hands are tied, and we have multiple code violations, you know, you know, and I agree with Councilmember Moore, and we've had several, several items, not necessarily treehouse, but I remember the staircase is one, I remember, uh, a driveway issue, the pa-...
The patio that was built, the laundry and back.
The patio, uh, I mean, this place was packed, absolutely packed, standing room only, and people out in the patio, uh, just willing to rip our heads off if we tried to grant an exception on a single individual and a single action, 'cause everybody else has conformed to everything else. So I'd like to see if there's a way that they can, you know, somehow move the structure, because first of all, you know, the people that are aware of this, when they heard it's attached to the city's taxpayers' sound wall, and if there's any structural issues created by a treehouse where the, and integrity of that sound wall goes down, or gets cracked, or kinda reduces that integrity, I mean, you're talking about the LNL that has to pay for that, the Light and Landscaping District, which is the other taxpayers, all of Lexington Hills, not just the neighbors. So there's, it's a many-part, unfortunately, moving question, if you will. This case is pretty clear, you can't attach prop, you can't attach personal property to city property. That, that, that in itself is one, and I appreciate the fact, yeah, you're saying, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll undo it. So if, if there's a way for your engineers to look at it and see if we can, you know, I, I would be willing, again, under the exceptions that I'm saying, if it's a lot would be willing, again, under the exceptions that I'm saying, if it's a lot coverage thing, if it's a setback thing from eight feet to six feet, because I know he wants to do in addition to the home, I'd be willing to say, I'm okay with that, but I'm not willing to really jeopardize any health, safety, and fire codes, especially when it comes to setback lines and building materials and engineering.
I have a question. So this accessory structure slash treehouse was built under our current codes and zoning and whatever. So let's say we did, there was an appetite up here at the council to modify our zoning so that, you know, notwithstanding the health and safety issues, but we changed it so that that height thing was taken care of and things like that. Since this was built before we made that change, I mean, does that absolve the issue? Or, you know, I'm trying to get, from a chronological standpoint here.
I think I'm following your question, council member Moore. And what you're asking is whether if the council wished to adopt, which may change to the city's zoning code, whether that would grandfather.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, whether that would grandfather existing structures into compliance. The answer unfortunately is no. In a typical grandfather situation, a structure was existing legally at the time, but only through government change.
Right, so I was asking for, I was asking for a reverse grandfather.
Correct.
And you're saying that doesn't work.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. I was just wondering.
Okay, any other comments or questions to the staff? Unless you have anything further, I would go ahead and.
No, sir, just wish to get a clear direction from council as to what staff wants to do.
Mine was, I think mine were pretty clear unless you need clarification.
I think mine was clear.
I don't think I owe what we should. I'm sorry.
I'll review mine one more time. I'm okay with 50% lot covers, but with exceptions within the authority of the planning development department and all the people she, when you do your design reviews and stuff, that she can make and grant exceptions up to 60%, maximum lot coverage. My other suggestion was we go from eight feet to six feet as far as the distance between accessory structure and a primary structure. And that, again, I'm trying to think of all the different lot sizes we have in the community, be a little generous there. I don't have a problem with that at all because if that's what they want to do, then that's fine. The other one is, I was just throwing out as an example, when you define accessory structures, you can say things such as, and throw a few in there, enters, including treehouse, and then, but put any kind of asterisk that denotes where they can, or a number one, two or three, where they can go down to the bottom of that same page and say, may require additional whatever. So that way, again, I'm comfortable with accessory structures the way it's defined, but then I've had to work with that since 1976, so. But again, I'm sensitive to saying, okay, can we do a little bit better job of defining what accessory structures are? But we say, but not limited to. And sometimes may throw out some additional examples. In fact, you had several up there. Maybe yank one or two off of each of those slides that you gave us and say, such as, but not limited to. And as you go through the different ones, put a little like a one, two, or three or an asterisk where they know they got to look at a denotation at the bottom of the page and say, this may occur, this may still be required, that kind of stuff.
And add a note that says, when in doubt or for anything not listed here, call city staff.
So if they took this down, and then we did modify and create a treehouse ordinance for one day, and then obliterated it and allowed them one day to put it back up, would that work?
That's what we call a special interest legislation, council member Moore.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Good question.
Anybody else have anything to add for the two of them or three of them, because Dave said there were two?
I just got a question, maybe it's a dumb question, I'm going to ask it anyways. What does the homeowner walk out of this building with, what? What direction do they?
The direction he has, he's in violation of several ordinance in the city and he has to correct them.
But they can appeal the ordinance violation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Through a code enforcement process.
Why are you laughing?
No, because he's explained this several times and it goes through code enforcement, but it doesn't come to us.
I know.
The appeal is through code enforcement.
So they can appeal it through the proper process.
Well, again, what's really cool is the fact that I know our staff is as good as he says, so let's just see if we can find a happy meeting to make something work and still fit within as many rules and regulations that we can with our current code.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, and I think I have captured, and I think Director Johns as well, the council's direction as indicated by a majority of the council.
Okay.
And I just want to make it very clear, staff is not against treehouse. I don't think council is either.
Oh, I know. I don't think anybody up here is against treehouses.
But we're all, we're all about making sure that life and safety and the public welfare are protected through implementation of the city's zoning code as dictated and mandated by the council.
You know, and that's, and I think Andy said it the best, you know, it's, these are the most difficult things because we are flexible. We try to look for exceptions. We try to look for different avenues. We try to do things differently, like as you pointed out, and we have a history of that. But this is where unfortunately, and I could go back on 20 something years of history, that these laws are created because prior to some of these laws, and I'll give you one perfect example, prior to some of these laws, we would have a council that was up here for many years that says, oh, that hardware store can't come to town because it's going to put my buddy out of business.
Yep.
And so it takes those type of mentalities, if you will, off the table to treat everybody fair and equally. And so that's kind of where our hands are cuffed right now, but I think with all discussions you guys have been having all along, man, if there's just a way to kind of get it off the wall, move it back, lower it a little bit, maybe our tape measure is off by a foot.
But to Steve's point, the council members that made decisions like that, I believe all of them are now dead.
Oh, yeah, it's been quite a while. That's why a lot of these things.
I just want, I didn't want anybody thinking it had happened recently.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is, I'm talking back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s when, before a lot of these state codes were actually created. And we do review the state codes, at least depending on which ones that come out different times, but we always see a new state code amendment at least once a year, and it'll be plumbing, building, electrical, whatever. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of times unfortunate, sitting in this chair, it's very difficult to want to be able to do more, but processed by the state and dictated by the state doesn't allow us. And that's very hard to just sit here and absorb that, but it's what we're supposed to do as elected officials and doesn't make any use of it for us. So please find a way to make this happen, however we, so the kids can still enjoy it. So, okay, I think we're done with that item. So move on to the next item, please.
Your next item is city manager reports.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank the mayor and city council and fire chief Rodriguez and staff for an outstanding grand opening of fire station 39 yesterday, and that station formally entered into service today. So that was a very exciting day for us. Community service day is coming up this Saturday. We have over 2,500 volunteers who are going to be working on 60 different projects throughout Folsom that are going to make a positive lasting impact. We still have a limited number of player spots in the mayor's cup invitational golf tournament that's coming up on September 21st, which benefits the Cave Teen Center, so please sign up if you're interested in that. And I wanted to share that the friends of the Folsom Library had their book sale, I guess, last weekend and raised close to $7,000, which was phenomenal. Folsom Renaissance Fair is coming up September 22nd and 23rd, and you can find out, buy tickets at folsomfair spelled with an I, F-A-I-R-E dot com. And then my most important announcement tonight is, again, to extend profound thanks to Robert Goss for his service to the city of Folsom. Robert, thank you for your expertise, your creativity, and your boundless energy. We're also grateful and we wish you and Claudia the best as you literally ride off into the sunset, so thank you.
Well, I'll just say that Elaine captured everything that I was thinking about mentioning, so thank you, Elaine, and I'll say good evening.
Again, thanks to Robert. Thanks to all the folks at Folsom Fire for a great, great, great event yesterday. Only, my only, my only comment is, next time, could you guys space the chairs a little bit further apart? I felt bad for Dave and Rick, who were squished in between a bunch of other people, and Robert, who had to climb over them to get to his seat. Other than that, it was a wonderful event, and it was fabulous to see the families of all of the, all of the folks that got promoted and the people who were, who became part of the fire department yesterday. It was very, very well done. I'm sorry that I couldn't stay for the lunch, but it smelled really good the whole time we were sitting there smelling it. Usual warnings about traffic, the kids are back in school. I saw, I wasn't out driving around that long today, but I think I saw three people run lights today. I had somebody coming out Montrose in a black BMW, very upset that I was, you know, driving the speed limit. So he decided to do this behind me, then run through the stop sign. So, people, act like adults. Pretend your mother's behind you or that the Folsom cops are. And I have noticed just in the last couple of weeks, I think you guys have been writing a fair number of tickets the last couple of weeks, and that's a good thing. Be careful, next one could be you.
Roger.
I just want to say a reiterate the success of station 39, so congratulations, chief, you and your team. And, you know, today's a day of remembrance, and 17 years ago, I graduated high school and 9/11 was that year, and it was just incredible to see this year, like all years, Folsom remembering in the way they do and celebrating our service, our men and women of Folsom PD and Folsom Fire and everything they give us, that the ceremony today was, you know, I just want to say thank you for, first of all, to Mayor Miklos for his passionate speech today, and just the emotions you expressed really, really touched my heart. And everyone, the men and women just standing and remembering that time and what service you do to this community, it means a lot to us and me as a council member. So I just wanted to say thank you. And Robert, I'm going to ask you one more time, just stay a little longer. But if you don't want to, that's all good, so thanks for your service. That's all I got. Good night.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I just repeat the kudos for the fire back-to-back and the cops yesterday for the remembrance of 9/11. Well done, both of them, as usual. And Robert, I still got a shout-out to you on Thursday, so you're not done yet with me, just to be sure I get to be the emcee to kill you, okay?
Anyway, I think pretty much everybody captured everything. I do want to do one last shout-out because obviously he couldn't be here because he's on duty at station 39. As the chief announced yesterday at the station opening, John Woo is retiring after 30 years with the Folsom Fire Department. And I heard lots of stories today even about John, and they're all good. I actually heard one captain say that John could pull a five-inch supply line faster than he could pull a one and three-quarter inch hose line. He was just a beast of an engineer, a beast of a gentleman when it came to basically fireground activities and support. But more importantly, from a personal standpoint, as long as I've known John, he always, always had a smile on his face. He always had a demeanor to say, hey, how's your day going, this and that? Just the most personal man I've met in years.